Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right. I try, I try. Everyone's got, you know, only so much time. We gotta get in there. We're being bored. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks for putting on that, Russ.
Russ.
Russ Borris. Yeah, of course, my name is Russ Borris.
Oh, okay. Oh, great. Yeah. So, I set up a feeling for some people. I don't know. I think children, children are not it. Um, the good people. And he will also, um, electric as a team.
He uses a different platform than we use for the website. So, he's gonna investigate to find out how we can do it.
But the point is, um, I'm gonna have to, um, quickly.
Yeah.
There's gonna be, this is the, and there's gonna be news of this again very quickly. And we should have a website.
Well, you also have to set up a PayPal account. And I don't know who's gonna be responsible for that. I mean, I could, I could set up PayPal account, but, you know, money needs to get to the positive engine. It's gonna control.
We should have, hold on, three, five, no.
Hold on, I'll ask, uh, Dave.
Yeah.
Pam, just tell me when you're ready. Pam, you ready? Okay, good. All right. You ready? Good. All good?
Yes.
Very good. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Ridgewood Village Council, tonight is Public Workshop, January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is seven thirty-one P. M. Adequate notice that this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, the Record, and by submission to all persons entitled to same as provided by law as scheduled, including the date and time of this meeting. Roll call.
Councilwoman Perrin.
Here.
Councilwoman Reynolds.
Here.
Councilwoman Vagianos.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Seddon is not here. And Mayor Knudsen.
Here. Please join us for the flag salute.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us in a moment of silence for our men and women serving our nation, all of our first responders, and for New York City Police Officers Wilbert Mora and Jason Rivera.
Thank you. Before we begin, I just want to remind everyone, first, I'm going to thank everyone for masking up and properly social distancing. As a reminder, the Annie Zuzzi Room downstairs is open. We have a live stream for the meeting downstairs. Can somebody, can you not hear me? Are we okay? All right. And if there's any overflow in this room, we'll ask everyone just to go downstairs, and we will give everyone an opportunity, a few minutes, to come up if they would like to speak during public comment. And so, anyone who wishes to participate in public comment, please come up to the microphone, three minutes per person for a total of forty minutes. We ask you to please state your name and address for the record, and if you can keep your mask on while you're speaking, please do so, and speak into the microphone loud and clear.
And forgive me if, if you, if there isn't a chair, we would ask that people wait outside for their opportunity to speak, because we just don't want to have too many people in the room. Thank you so much.
All right, just hang on one second, Ann. Yes. All right. It's, it's, we're not gonna wait, they can come in, come on in. Oh, I'm sorry.
Now, Lillian, we don't want to put more chairs out.
No. Excuse me. All right, just, just stop a minute, Lillian. You can just sit down. Siobhan and I think, is that Ann out there? They can come on in. You could just come stand over by the wall, as long as you're social distance and wearing your mask, it's fine. Siobhan, why don't you just come on over, over to the wall? Thank you. Go ahead, Ann. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. Ann Loving, three forty-two South Irving Street. It is lovely to see all of you, and I am very grateful for the safety precautions that have very recently been put into place at these village council meetings. One positive outcome of the pandemic is that we learned how technology can connect us more than we ever thought possible. When the village council meetings were on Zoom, citizens who had rarely come to meetings were logging in to make comments. Although remote call-ins at these meetings started because of the pandemic, I believe they should be enabled moving forward permanently. This would accommodate citizens who cannot drive, who cannot drive at night, who cannot get or cannot afford a babysitter, who are out of town on a particular Wednesday, and myriad other reasons. How wonderful if every citizen who wants to be heard could be. I personally have not been attending in-person meetings because it has been outside of my COVID comfort level. We watch every meeting from home, but we miss being here. However, even when the pandemic subsides, there could be, and likely will be, occasional days when getting here will not be feasible. How accommodating it would be if we could call in our comments on such evenings. Three of you have told me that the dialed-in public comments make the meetings go so much longer. I think it is unfair to lay blame for the length of the meetings at the feet of those citizens who wish to make comments. Sometimes discussions among council members are lengthy. Sometimes presentations from vendors and members of the administrative staff are very long. Sometimes the agendas are lengthy. So, please, let's not decide that public comments are solely responsible for the length of any particular meeting. Yes, there have been occasions when a hot-button issue has caused a lot of people to come out, but that's not the norm. My husband Boyd, who is always a solution-oriented guy, understands that at least one of you does not like how late the meetings go. He checked and found that some nearby municipalities, including Paramus, begin their council meetings as early as six. If you could do that, you could get out earlier. Also, if you had your closed sessions prior to the meeting, maybe that would help you get out earlier. I've spoken with each of you individually about this matter, but I would love to hear my five elected officials publicly discuss their opinions on remote call-ins. It would benefit all of us to hear what you have to say. I know that two of you wanted to see this on the agenda this evening, but that was denied. How unfortunate, how opaque. Roger Wigan was my husband's best friend. As the plaque here in his honor reads, "The public should always have the final word." So, please, I implore you, let the public call in their comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just your name and address for the record.
Lucille Coyle. My address at the store, I'm a business owner, one eleven East Ridgewood Avenue. I'm here today to talk about my concerns over decrease in sales and decrease in foot traffic, most of all, in the village. My store opened late in August of two thousand and nineteen, and from that day to, to current, I'm down probably more than six percent, which most startling is the number from this year to last year. So, last January, I'm, I'm right now doing twenty percent less in business than I did last year, this, this same time in January. And we're also noticing a correlation with the decrease in traffic. Looking at the pandemic, obviously, that's a huge cause from two thousand and nineteen, you could say, but from last year to this year, when we didn't even have a vaccine, I don't understand, you know, what, what the issue is. I've been thinking about some possible causes. You look up and down the streets, and you see more and more "for rent" signs, you know, people aren't comfortable shopping, you know, in a, in a, in a town where, you know, half the stores are closing. The parking is, is another big issue. I know that a lot's been done with parking garages and the Park Mobile app, but quite frankly, I'm hearing a lot of complaints from our customers due to the, the lack of parking, because we have these cement corrals, and the restaurants taking up a whole bunch of spaces. The app doesn't work sometimes, people don't know where the kiosks are. Young and olds are finding this really difficult. I also see a lot of benefits given towards the restaurants, you know, which is awesome. Everybody struggles and is still struggling due to the pandemic, but the parking, free parking ends at six o'clock on Saturdays, and there's free parking on Sundays. So, that's really only incentivizing restaurants and more restaurants to come into town, but really a discouraging factor for retailers. So, I came with some solutions that I'm happy to discuss, and Mayor and I spoke a little bit earlier, and I'm happy to email you my, my suggestions. I've also spoken to Pamela Perrin a couple of times. So, I thought that offering free parking, maybe just a couple of days a week on these terrible winter months, February and March, on the slow days, on Mondays and Tuesdays, maybe, may incentivize some people to come in and, you know, when they might necessarily not have. Another huge issue is the Sunday shopping. I did start to do some Sunday shop, Sunday opening on Sunday, selling what I'm allowed to sell with the blue laws, and, and actually delivering for free for people that wanted to buy clothing. And it did help me a little bit, but I think that offering Sunday sales, especially if you're the only one in, you know, Bergen County, or one of the only ones in Bergen County, would be a huge, have a huge impact on retailers wanting to come into the town. I know that there was an effort that was brought to the governor last year, I want to say, and he wouldn't.
Lucille, I'm sorry. So, so that was the timer. Why don't you send everything that you have to me?
I will.
And then I'll, I'll call you. You have my number, I have your number, so let's try and figure this out. So, I appreciate it, and I, and certainly, we all share your concern, so thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Please send it to all of us. Thank you.
Good evening. Ann Burton Walsh, one twelve South Irving. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Executive Committee of the League of Women Voters of Ridgewood. We had an understanding that.
Ann, could you just speak up a little?
Oh, sure. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Executive Committee of the League of Women Voters of Ridgewood. As the League of Women Voters stated at the Village Council's September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one public work session, and prior to that, in an August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one letter that was submitted to northjersey.com, and prior to that, at the July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one public meeting, we support hybrid meeting access as an effective way to promote public participation in government, one of our primary objectives. Hybrid meeting access, for those who don't know, would allow live public comments to be delivered remotely via Zoom or another application at village council meetings. And as we've stated before, while COVID was the impetus for remote village council meetings, the reasons for continuing to allow remote public comment are independent of COVID. Being able to call in live with public comments promotes diversity, equity, and inclusion by enabling residents with disabilities and childcare challenges, as well as those with other logistical challenges, to participate in the democratic process. The Ridgewood Board of Education, as you know, allows for live remote public comment, and of course, attending meetings remotely has become the norm for many corporate and government workers across the board, and is likely to stay that way, at least in part. We, at the League of Women Voters of Ridgewood, are concerned about the low level of attendance at village council meetings, not tonight, but in general, since remote access was stopped, as well as the low levels of attendance historically, on average. On the other hand, remote access in two thousand and twenty, and two thousand and twenty-one brought about a high level of public participation in our local government that was unprecedented in recent decades. The League of Women Voters of Ridgewood requests that the council place hybrid access on the agenda for the next public meeting, and we request that the council vote on the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rorick Hallaby, one Franklin Avenue. I demand, I say, I demand, as an eighty-one-year-old resident of Ridgewood with a serious chronic lung condition, that you have hybrid meetings. I want to participate in the public discourse, but cannot do so short of attending in person. By stubbornly insisting on having only in-person meetings, you are discriminating against seniors with disabilities like me. I understand why you're doing that, but I won't get into analyzing the mark of authoritarian regimes. Keep the peasants out. Control the situation. There seems to be also the rules and regulations, also the rules regulating how the public can address the village council at these meetings. But I'm not aware of any rules regulating how members of a village council can address the public. If a member of a village council has the right to call a member of the public a liar, then we, the public, should have the right to do the same if we think we have been lied to by a member of the council. I say what is good for the goose is good for the gander. I also say that whenever a member of the public is called out of order, the interruption should be compensated for by adding to the speaker's time. On a happier note, a couple of months ago, our CFO, Bob Rooney, gave a wonderful general primer on the village budget. The how, the what, and the why's. We need to have him present another meeting in February, in which he can review the specifics of budgets for the past three years, to prepare the public for the budget for the coming year. He needs to do that. He need to be transparent. He need to be transparent, because every time we talk about transparency, some of you, I see nothing but opaqueness. Thank you.
Rorick, I'm sorry, could you just repeat the last line you just said? You want him to do what for the last three years?
I would want him to review the specifics of the budgets for the past three years.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
To see exactly what the numbers looked like, and why and how, what went up and went down.
I just didn't, I, I didn't pick it up with the.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for repeating.
To prepare the public for the budget for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Siobhan Cram, Winograd, two seventy-four Ivy Place. I'm here to talk about an item that wasn't on the agenda, as referenced before, and before I begin.
Could you just please speak louder, because we won't pick you up?
Is this okay?
And a little slower, too, if you could.
Okay.
Like this?
And actually, let's say this to everyone who's gonna come to the mic. We're all dealing with COVID, we're all dealing with masking, we all have to speak more loudly, more clearly, and into the mic. So, let's just try and focus on it. It's very hard for all of us.
I'm gonna go home and tell my teenagers, I was told to talk more and talk louder. So, okay, I'm gonna begin again.
Just do it now. Start again.
Okay, is this loud enough? You want me to yell a little bit? Okay, so, I'm here to talk about an item that wasn't on the agenda, and before I begin, I want to remind this council that, from our perspective, the publics, you are a council of equals, and I was really taken aback to hear that an item wasn't put forth for public discussion, and that would be hybrid access. And, you know, the establishment of a majority block has been deemed to be antithetical to our form of government, and you're all supposed to be working individually, with no one being more powerful than the other. So, I am, before this even begins, I'm taken aback that the item wasn't on the agenda for discussion, particularly because you have a new councilperson who wasn't here, and this issue that the league just referenced was a debate question for our community. So, again, not one of the five of you has any more power than the other, and I think you should begin to treat each other as equals and place each other's items on the agenda. With that being said, I want to echo some of the sentiments that hybrid access is not about COVID, and, you know, people, that may have been the impetus to put it into place, but what we learned is hybrid access is about good governance and citizen engagement. It's also about a commitment to, you're disabled, elderly, and, you know, people, a significant percentage of your population can't get here, whether they're working, or like my family who had an accessibility issue, and because COVID is a spectrum of caution, you know, you can be indifferent, or you can be really cautious, you should be appealing to everybody and allowing this. The silver lining of putting it in is you had massive engagement. One in five Americans will be disabled at the course of their life, so take a look around, take a look at your dais. Everybody might be able-bodied in this room, able to get here, certain populations, like the vets, are more likely to be disabled, and that is a stunning statistic when you look at it. You all know it, it's all part of age-friendly, and we, in Ridgewood, should be really doing things that align with statements like aging in place, commitment to the elderly. Last year, our pickleballers were locked out with a real physical lock from a public park, something like so stunning and embarrassing to our community that we locked a park, and by pulling the plug on hybrid, you've locked other members of this community out. You might not know it, because they can't get in to tell you how locked out they are. When I was at Orchard, and the HSA put morning meetings in, working mothers came to our board and said, "You might as well say, 'We don't want you.'" By making things inaccessible, you are telling the public you don't wish to hear from them. You are sending a terrible message to people who've been dealt a terrible blow, like my father, who could not access this meeting, or elderly people who can't drive at night, people who have jobs at night. I, I'm just so taken aback that this is even a discussion, it's so embarrassing for our town. I would like to respectfully request, again, as the same, that this be added to the agenda, and all of you can go on record as you, how you feel to this.
Siobhan, thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Hello, good evening. My name is Rachel Roland. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and Catherine Madrid. We are both residents of Ridgewood at eighty East Ridgewood Avenue. Thank you for your time and for your ear this evening. As I mentioned, my name is Rachel. We are both residents of the Central Business District, or the CBD, and wanted to give voice to the ongoing issue of parking for residents of the CBD. Earlier this afternoon, Catherine emailed each of you a proposal for a twenty-four-hour CBD residential parking permit. This issue is outlined in detail within the proposal, but we believe that there should be reasonable accommodations for CBD residents who simply do not have any other option for parking. It's not a luxury or a convenience to park where you live, it is a necessity. Parking for residents is not, is not a unique issue to Ridgewood CBD, but it does, but the lack of solution does seem to be unique to Ridgewood. As you see in the proposal, we have outlined nine other nearby towns with similar parking challenges, all of which have allowances for their CBD residents, two of which provide free parking. With those free outliers excluded, in order for CBD residents to park in Ridgewood, we will pay, on average, eight hundred percent more than other residential, residential citizens in other towns nearby. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And we have your proposal, I think it was mail to, email to everyone, we're looking at it, so thank you for coming. Thank you. Okay, all right, all right. With that, we are, well, you're waiting for your, you're waiting for your presentation, right? Okay, so you just have a seat, you just wait, we're gonna close public comment. Your presentation is separate, so you have to wait until after village council and manager reports. You okay? Okay, all right. So, with that, we're going to go, just real quick, I, I just want to point out that on a couple of comments, a hybrid, the discussion of hybrid meetings was on our agenda several times, I believe. It was discussed, it was decided on, it was discussed, and I, I think that the, the position at this time is, there's nothing to discuss further until we continue to evaluate. So, with that, we'll go on to the manager's report.
Sure, I'd just like to mention one other thing. Mr. Hallaby mentioned that he wanted time back. We actually do stop the timer if the council responds.
Insisting on having only in-person meetings, you are discriminating against seniors with disabilities like me. I understand why you're doing that, but I won't get into analyzing the mark of authoritarian regimes. Keep the peasants out. Control the situation. There seems to be all sorts of rules and regulations, also rules regulating how the public can address the village council at these meetings. But I'm not aware of any rules regulating how members of a village council can address the public. If a member of a village council has the right to call a member of the public a liar, then we, the public, should have the right to do the same if we think we have been lied to by a member of the council. I say what is good for the goose is good for the gander. I also say that whenever a member of the public is called out of order, the interruption should be compensated for by adding to the speaker's time. On a happier note, a couple of months ago, our CFO, Bob Bruni, gave a wonderful general primer on the village budget. The how, the what, and the why's. We need to have him present another meeting in February in which he can review the specifics of budgets for the past three years to prepare the public for the budget for the coming year. He needs to do that. He need to be transparent. He need to be transparent because every time we talk about transparency, some of you, I see nothing but opaqueness. Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry. Could you just repeat the last line you just said? You want him to do what for the last three years?
I would want him to review the specifics of the budgets for the past three years.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
To see exactly what the numbers look like and why and how, what went up and what down.
I just didn't hear, I didn't pick it up with the message.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for repeating.
To prepare the public for the budget for the coming year. Thank you.
Hi, Shyvana Kram, Winograd 274 Ivy Place. I'm here to talk about an item that wasn't on the agenda as referenced before. And before I begin--
Could you just please speak louder because we won't pick you up?
Is this okay?
And a little slower, too, if you could.
Okay.
Like this?
And actually, let's say this to everyone who's going to come to the mic. We're all dealing with COVID. We're all dealing with masking. We all have to speak more loudly, more clearly, and into the mic. So let's just try and focus on it. It's very hard for all of us.
I'm going to go home and tell my teenagers I was told to talk more and talk louder. So, okay, I'm going to begin again.
Just do it now. Start again.
Okay. Is this loud enough? You want me to yell a little bit? Okay, so I'm here to talk about an item that wasn't on the agenda. And before I begin, I want to remind this council that from our perspective, the public's, you are a council of equals. And I was really taken aback to hear that an item wasn't put forth for public discussion, and that would be hybrid access. And, you know, the establishment of a majority block has been deemed to be antithetical to our form of government. And you're all supposed to be working individually with no one being more powerful than the other. So I am, before this even begins, I'm taken aback that the item wasn't on the agenda for discussion, particularly because you have a new council person who wasn't here. And this issue that the league just referenced was a debate question for our community. So again, not one of the five of you has any more power than the other. And I think you should begin to treat each other as equals and place each other's items on the agenda. With that being said, I want to echo some of the sentiments that hybrid access is not about COVID. And, you know, people, that may have been the impetus to put it into place, but what we learned is hybrid access is about good governance and citizen engagement. It's also about a commitment to your disabled elderly and, you know, people, a significant percentage of your population can't get here, whether they're working or like my family who had an accessibility issue. And because COVID is a spectrum of caution, you know, you can be indifferent or you can be really cautious, you should be appealing to everybody and allowing this. The silver lining of putting it in is you had massive engagement. One in five Americans will be disabled at the course of their life. So take a look around, take a look at your dais. Everybody might be able-bodied in this room, able to get here. Certain populations, like the vets, are more likely to be disabled. And that is a stunning statistic when you look at it. You all know it. It's all part of Age Friendly. And we in Ridgewood should be really doing things that align with statements like aging in place, commitment to the elderly. Last year, our pickleballers were locked out with a real physical lock from a public park, something like so stunning and embarrassing to our community that we locked a park. And by pulling the plug on hybrid, you've locked other members of this community out. You might not know it because they can't get in to tell you how locked out they are. When I was at Orchard and the HSA put morning meetings in, working mothers came to our board and said, you might as well say, we don't want you. By making things inaccessible, you are telling the public you don't wish to hear from them. You are sending a terrible message to people who have been dealt a terrible blow, like my father, who could not access this meeting, or elderly people who can't drive at night, people who have jobs at night. I, I'm just so taken aback that this is even a discussion. It's so embarrassing for our town. I would like to respectfully request again, as the same, that this be added to the agenda, and all of you can go on record as you, how you feel to this.
Shyvana, thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Rachel Roland. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and Catherine Madrid. We are both residents of Ridgewood at 80 East Ridgewood Avenue. Thank you for your time and for your ear this evening. As I mentioned, my name is Rachel. We are both residents of the Central Business District, or the CBD, and wanted to give voice to the ongoing issue of parking for residents of the CBD. Earlier this afternoon, Catherine emailed each of you a proposal for a 24-hour CBD residential parking permit. This issue is outlined in detail within the proposal, but we believe that there should be reasonable accommodations for CBD residents who simply do not have any other option for parking. It's not a luxury or a convenience to park where you live. It is a necessity. Parking for residents is not, is not a unique issue to Ridgewood CBD, but it does, but the lack of solution does seem to be unique to Ridgewood. As you see in the proposal, we have outlined nine other nearby towns with similar parking challenges, all of which have allowances for their CBD residents, two of which provide free parking. With those free outliers excluded, in order for CBD residents to park in Ridgewood, we will pay, on average, 800% more than other residential, residential citizens in other towns nearby. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have your proposal. I think it was mail to, email to everyone. We're looking at it. So thank you for coming. Thank you. Okay. All right. All right. With that, we are, well, you're waiting for your, you're waiting for your presentation, right? Okay, so you just have a seat. You just wait. We're going to close public comment. Your presentation is separate, so you have to wait until after village council and manager reports. You okay? Okay. All right. So with that, we're going to go, just real quick, I just want to point out that on a couple of comments, a hybrid, the discussion of hybrid meetings was on our agenda several times, I believe. It was discussed. It was decided on. It was discussed. And I think that the, the position at this time is there's nothing to discuss further until we continue to evaluate. So with that, we'll go on to the manager's report.
Sure. I'd just like to mention one other thing. Mr. Hallaby mentioned that he wanted time back. We actually do stop the timer if the council responds. So, and then we restart it when the person from the public speaks. It's always been that way, just so you know.
Right.
I, the manager's report, this is the last week of the Chamber of Commerce Restaurant Week. Tomorrow night actually is the final night. Call your favorite restaurant for their menu offering, eat in, call in or take out. The first quarter tax payments are due February 1st. There is a 10-day grace period, so you must pay by February 10th in order not to pay interest, and that interest will accrue from February 1st. The Village of Ridgewood 2022 calendar is listing all sanitation, recycling, and yard waste from spring to early fall. Pickup schedules have been delivered by the postal service to each residence. It includes planning boards, zoning board of adjustment, village council, and library board of trustee meetings for the year. It also gives the holidays when we're closed. And check those schedules in a holiday week because, for pickup of sanitation and recycling, because they do change. The 2022 tennis and pickleball memberships are on sale and must be renewed from last year. If you did not receive a yellow membership badge in 2021, you must have your picture taken and badge printed for 2022 at the stable. And their hours are Monday through Friday, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Our annual budget meetings will be held here in the courtroom, February 16th, 17th, 25th, and 28th, beginning at 5:00 p.m. It will also be televised on FiOS, Channel 34, and YouTube. The public is welcome at these meetings where department directors explain various aspects of their budgets. Annual parking permits are on sale at Village Hall to residents and non-residents at the same price. Please sign up for e-notices. This way you will stay in touch with what's going on in the village, events, as well as certain important information. Christmas tree pickup, actually tomorrow is the final pickup on the West Side. You can still drop off your Christmas trees until Friday, this Friday, the 28th. After that, there'll be no more Christmas tree pickup or drop off. The village upcoming meetings, village council upcoming meetings are broadcast live from the Village Hall courtroom, on the village website, and Channel 34 on FiOS, and also on YouTube. February 2nd, February 23rd, and March 2nd are public work sessions, beginning at 7:30 p.m. February 9th and March 9th are public meetings, which begin at 8:00 p.m. These are also all noted on your village calendar. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. I'm surprised to hear that Christmas trees are still being collected. Councilman Vagianos.
Ready to go. So, we've had a busy January. On January 13th, we met with the Board of Education representatives and the superintendent of schools. And the first thing that the superintendent of schools mentioned was that he's having a big problem getting substitute teachers and that there are no current problems with attendance for teachers or students, which we were all very happy to hear about. He is dealing with many issues of anti-maxers and the reduction of quarantine period to five days. He said that going remote is only an option with an outbreak, and he can't make individual decisions regarding going remote at this point. The week after Christmas break, it got very dicey, but they said they made it through. Currently, 90% of all students are in school. For the most part, kids have done okay readjusting and keeping up. Some kids have had some problems, but overall, he feels that, that the district is doing well. There were initially, in September and October, some behavioral issues for students who had been away for a whole year, and readjusting was something they had to deal with. But by December, he said, most of these issues had returned to normal. Tom's assessment is that if we are, that we are ultimately way ahead of most districts nationwide. And he is cautiously hopeful that the worst is behind us. As for, and he also brought up the issue of flooding and fields management, and it comes down to the fact that there are not enough fields to begin with, and that flooding only makes it worse. And the problem going forward is that even if we find a piece of property to put a field in, there is no, most neighborhoods don't want a new field in their neighborhood. I also met with the stigma-free committee on January 18th, and it was actually a wonderful meeting because the health department informed us that they had hosted a vaccination clinic on January 5th. At that time, 115 adults, 89 kids, all got vaccinated, and they having, they had another one on the 20th where they had 157 adults and 27 kids vaccinated. And they're planning another one for February 2nd. The health department wants to have a Valentine's Day greeting card program for seniors to receive a card to brighten their day. Currently, they do this for Christmas. And they want to continue the wellness challenge with Valley because that's been going on for eight years, and it involves walking, exercise classes, health issues, stress, stress management. I have one other issue I want to comment on, and that is the issue regarding hybrid access. Ann Loving spoke earlier, and she commented that this was unfortunate. I know Ann for decades, and while we talk on a regular basis, I find that we rarely agree on a number of issues. On this issue, however, she and I are as one. This is an issue about fundamental fairness. If necessity is the mother of invention, COVID has taught us a better way. Hybrid access is not about COVID. COVID taught us to do this. By the way, we are still in the throes of COVID despite what many people believe because everyone's comfort level is different. I have personally commented that I'm the primary caregiver for a two-year-old unvaccinated grandchild. I can't afford to get COVID, even though I'm vaccinated and boosted. But the truth is that none of my committees that I meet with meets in person. Not one. They all meet by Zoom. One look at the train station and the West Side will show you how many people are actually meeting in person. I remember dropping my daughter off there, and if you didn't get there by seven o'clock, place was full. Go there at noon, it's about 80% empty. This, I had requested that this be placed on the agenda for discussion. Councilwoman Perrin also requested that. We were denied that. All we want to do is air this publicly. I have not been on the, on the council the last time this was discussed. And just like any other issue, this is one of fairness. This is like voting rights. This is something we need to look at and find a solution to. I'm hopeful that my council colleagues will see it that way and ultimately put it on the agenda so that we can discuss it. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilwoman Perrin.
Thank you, Mayor. The consultants who are drafting the master plan reached out to the Central Business District Advisory Committee, to which I am liaison, and we all met last week via Zoom and had a discussion about elements, the CBD element in the master plan. And it was very interesting. And let's see. One thing that came up was that many of the people who go downtown, who are customers, patrons, are from out of town. And people sort of looked at that as a negative, but as the consultants pointed out, maybe that's a positive. We also had updates from our guild, the Ridgewood Guild Liaison, and, which included a request for better electric in the lamp posts downtown, some of which are dead, which affects musicians and their abilities to play and amplify. Let's see. They are looking forward to the newly planted trees on East Ridgewood Avenue flowering, leafing out in the spring. And they also asked for more snowflakes in Christmas season to have a more festive Christmas display. The Chamber of Commerce gave an update, update on downtown for the holidays and that the new format really worked well for families and for safety. I wanted to thank the, the Ridgewood Glen Rock Interfaith Committee for putting on the Martin Luther King Day weekend programs. They were really interesting. The movie Good Trouble about John Lewis was, was very thought-provoking, and the commenter, a former head of the NAACP, had a really interesting personal perspective. I'd like to thank Rich Calby, Director of the Water Department and Water Utility, and Sean Hamlin, Director of Recycling, for speaking to the League of Women Voters. As long as I've been watching the Water Committee and Recycling, I still learn something when they presented. And last, I'd like to read an email that we all received from a frequent observer of our meetings, Linda McNamara. She writes, "I am unable to attend the January 26th council meeting due to health concerns. I am hoping that a member of the council might read my letter so that it will be recorded in the minutes. It was wonderful to hear Ann Loving's words at a recent meeting. Thank you so much, Paul," meaning Councilwoman Vagianos, "for reading her letter. Many of us were under the impression that a discussion on hybrid access was to be on the agenda. This is no longer the case. We have heard that it has already been discussed enough, and three council members were against putting it on the agenda. So many members of the community have advocated in favor of a remote option, including organizations such as the League of Women Voters of Ridgewood, Access Ridgewood, and Age Friendly Ridgewood. Countless others have weighed in on a return to remote access. Council members have stated that they have received many emails and phone calls to the contrary, but there has been not a single person who has attended a meeting expressing these sentiments. Who are these people? By my count, there have been hundreds of statements in favor of hybrid access and none to the contrary. To ignore the will of the people and not allowing for a cogent discussion to take place is an anti-democratic action and unreasonable. While we went remote due to COVID, we learned much from the experience. So many people, for a variety of reasons, are unable to attend in person, but were able to participate when remote access was in place. Our municipal court has been meeting virtually for over 22 months, and it works. The council meets in these very chambers. Please reconsider this arbitrary decision to block any return to hybrid access. Sincerely, Linda McNamara." Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mayor. So the planning board met on January 18th. We adopted the memorializing resolution for Tascow Enterprises at 315 East Glen Avenue. The next two planning board meetings are very important. The first one is February 1st. The meeting will be a public hearing regarding a preliminary investigation for the Valley Hospital property on North Bandean Avenue as an area in need of redevelopment and/or rehabilitation. The next planning board meeting, which is February 15th, is going to be an exciting one, and I hope that anybody and everybody who wants to attend can. The master plan team will be presenting their preliminary findings and recommendations for the new master plan. There will be an opportunity for the public to respond and provide valuable feedback. So please attend if you can, if you have any comments. If you can't attend, you can always email them, and they will take your comments into consideration. The Citizen Safety Advisory Committee met on Tuesday, January 25th downstairs in the Garden Room, live. Yay! The Glen Avenue sidewalk construction has been stopped temporarily because of the winter weather, and depending upon the 2022 capital budget, hopefully, we will continue with the sidewalks on Glen Avenue. There is a pedestrian actuated signal under consideration for the Alpine Terrace Crosswalk. And just yesterday, I drove up Glen and I saw, I, I think they were putting in a pedestrian actuated signal at the intersection of Glen and Hillcrest. I wanted to drive past today to see, but I didn't get a chance, but that's what it looked like to me. So that's exciting. Hopefully, that's all installed and working. Smart Street, New Jersey, oh, a Smart Street, New Jersey prototype banner is in the works, and it will be brought before the council for their review. A resident from the area of Morningside Road and Hamilton Road was at the meeting. This was the second time she was there to discuss the speed at which cars go around the intersections there. The road happens to be extremely wide, and it kind of just allows cars to go fast. So there are preliminary plans to narrow and channelize the intersections. It's under review by Engineering Department currently. Another resident came to the meeting with a, a report that he created for a program for pedestrian safety. The CSAC members are going to review his report and offer comments at our next meeting. Sheila Brogan, who is the Board of Ed liaison to the CSAC, discussed an initiative from Age Friendly Ridgewood regarding the issue of sidewalk and bike riding, especially in the CBD. They just want to see if there is any kind of interest in this. So they're, they're hoping to have some Zoom discussions, and if you're interested in participating, please contact Sheila Brogan. The CSAC chair and the village engineer were interviewed by NV5 for the master plan circulation New Jersey's safe passing law requires drivers to allow a four-foot clearance when encountering pedestrians and bikes. This law will become, will be in effect starting March. The next CSAC meeting is February 17th in the Garden Room. I just want to say something about the hybrid meetings. There have been many people that I have spoken to that say, don't do the hybrid, it's a slippery, you know, please don't do it, it'll be horrible. Those people do not want to come here and say that. They feel like they will be ostracized. So there are many, many people, and I really resent somebody saying, I find it hard to believe there's anybody that, you know, says that, or there are hundreds of comments on one side. As far as I can tell, and no disrespect to anybody, but it's the same 10 people coming up. It's not hundreds. So it's almost, I feel like we're being bullied. And that's how I feel. And it's a shame that we have discussed it. Three members of this council do not want to do hybrid meetings. That is not, has not changed since the last discussion. There is no reason we should discuss it again. And I don't like to be feel, feel bullied, being bullied. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, before I give my report, I'm going to just tell everyone how amazing I find it, that, that an item was discussed and decided on repeatedly, looked into and decided on, and that the lack of respect for village council colleagues for two people to sit up here and to insinuate or insert into their council reports a discussion of a non-agenda item. It is not collegial at all. The behavior is awful. We told people, we told residents, we decided, the village council, months ago, that comments emailed to the, to the village council would not be read into the record. I wonder why some, we want to talk about discrimination, why some comments are read into the record? Why don't I hear the comments read into the record that say, please remove the cement barricades from the restaurants? Why isn't that comment read into the public record? Why aren't those emails included in those reports? These are village council and manager reports. It is not an opportunity to circumvent-- It is not an opportunity to circumvent the rules or the process or an agenda. It shouldn't be. Furthermore, the devil is always in the details. One advocating for hybrid meetings suggested that we eliminate completely the end-of-meeting public comment. I said, "No. I refuse to do that." Then the suggestion was to reduce all public comment to 90 seconds. I refused to do that. We have people who come to our meetings. It's not unusual for this meeting room to be full. I believe, months ago, we had our American Legionnaires here. The room was full to capacity, over and over and over. People can communicate with us. Residents communicate all the time. There are ample opportunities to participate. We really do appreciate. Nobody loves the public more than me. Love to hear from everyone. I love this discussion, but I find this to be inappropriate, and I'm going to continue with my Village Council report, and then we're going to continue with Mr. Stout, who's been kindly and patiently waiting, and then we're going to continue with our meeting. Historic Preservation Commission met on January 13, working to finalize signed applications for two new businesses, The Pancake Cafe on East Ridgewood Avenue and Sugar &amp; Spice Cafe located on Chestnut. Additionally, the Commission reviewed an application for La Lentina on West Ridgewood Ave., currently under new ownership. The new color scheme includes an updated, bright, beautiful yellow awning, highlighting the entrance to the restaurant offering a northern Italian cuisine. Commission member and planning, also Planning Board member, actually, the Planning Board Appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission, Diane O'Brien, shared her progress with the historic element to the new master plan. Diane is like crazy amazingly thorough. The Commission reviewed historic district maps, including an inventory of historic homes with each, within each of those districts. The Commission will also be making recommendations about how to approach historic districts that, over the years, have been so transformed as to no longer be recognizable as historic, or nor would they qualify for a continued historic designation. So that's kind of a little painful. We will be looking for ways to improve how we approach our historic structures. We're going to be looking for, to see if we can add some rules and better regulations to preserve for the future. The grand opening of World Flats took place this past Thursday. Was it this past Thursday? Seems like such a long time ago. Thursday, the World Flats is located at the corner of Walnut and East Ridgewood Avenue. The restaurant offers every type of World Cuisine flat, from Roma to the Rio Grande. We welcome World Flats to Ridgewood, wish them the best of luck. Their motto, eat clean, eat green, is that it? Eat clean, stay green at World Flats. I don't know, but welcome and good luck to everyone. Last night, the Library Board of Trustees met, beginning the meeting with the reorganization. I want to congratulate Matt Rogers, being reappointed as the Board Attorney. A motion was also made to continue with the existing slate of officers, and a subsequent vote carried that motion. Vic Arora will continue as Vice President, Ray Shanazuka Treasurer, Janice Furman Secretary, and I am thrilled and grateful to announce that Gail Campbell will continue as our President, and especially grateful for the tireless work of the entire Library Board of Trustees. As many have heard, the Library Reimagined Grant Application was not successful. Rebecca Rubenstein, one of our Board Members, has worked tirelessly to better understand the criteria, especially given our application. We have all the information on all of the applications that were made, and every application, grant application was actually ranked, and Ridgewood's Public Library was ranked very high in comparison to others. Still, we were not successful. So what the Board will do moving forward is to outline how best to proceed, including a list of needed improvements as we move into the budget season. I know we all look forward to Nancy's presentation, Nancy Green, the Library Director, which always includes all of the amazing events and offerings at the Ridgewood Public Library. The Board will continue to work on the leasing of the P's Library, and we hope to have that resolved very soon. And finally, I would like to wish the Deputy May Mike Seaton a happy birthday. His birthday is two days from today. He will be celebrating his birthday on Friday. Is that the 28? Oh, actually, yeah, 28, okay. And a super happy terrific birthday to his son Hunter, who celebrates his birthday tomorrow. He'll turn eight. He's actually been kind of with us since he was born. So happy birthday to both. And with that, we will go to Chris Stout for his presentation. Welcome, come on up.
Okay. Where are you off?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I have one more thing. Hang on one second, Chris, before you go, before you start. We are going to be closing the Annie Zuzzi Room, so we have nobody down there. Everybody's up here. We're comfortable. Everybody's safe. Social distancing, masking up. So we are going to close that down in 10 minutes, and we thank everyone for cooperating with us. Go ahead.
That's okay? Is it good?
Yes, sir.
Chris Stout, 251 Burnside Place in Ridgewood. I'm here on behalf of the American Legion Post 53, and I thank you for receiving us this evening. The reason for our visit is to bring you up to date on the Gold Star Families Monument Project, which you approved on September 9, and to ask your agreement for what we feel is a material change in our request. The change is simply in the location of the monument. The original plan was to place a headstone, if you like, in the ground on a site just adjacent to the War Memorial and Van Ness Square. We issued a request for proposals to local professional sculptor associations and received half a dozen proposals. As a committee, we agreed on one, which is not a stone in the ground at Van Ness, but instead a bronze, bronze sculpture created by Brian Hanlon of Tom's River to be placed on the risers, the steps, supporting the War Memorial Column. He is the artist who conceived the Gold Star Memorial in Holndale, and he will use some of those figures as models for ours. I think you all have a rendering. You have this rendering. You will notice there's a woman sitting with a tri-folded flag on her lap, representing the flag-covered casket, and a child. With them is a man, perhaps a father or a brother. Our request is simple: permission to place life-sized bronze sculpture of two adults and one child on the risers at War Memorial. I will answer your questions.
Questions, anyone? Comments, thoughts?
I love it. I think it's, yeah, I think it's great. I really think it'll, it'll add to the monument.
It's all right.
Okay, Councilwoman Karen?
I like this very much. I don't, I don't know much about materials. How well does, does bronze weather?
Say again, I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing.
How well does bronze weather?
Well, they just took down Teddy Roosevelt from the Museum of Natural History. He'd been up there for 80 years. And there are others around in various city, national capitals that have been for, for forever. They're still digging bronze out of the earth in, in, in Greece, so last very, very long period of time. This is a long, long, long-term proposal.
Thank you.
Chris, will there be some kind of plaque?
Say again?
Will there be some kind of plaque there explaining?
Yes, there will be, if you look, right beside the man's right leg, you see, there's a long plaque. And that plaque will indicate that it is a Gold Star Family Monument. That is nothing more, very simple. And above it, you'll see there's a round one, and that is the logo of the National Association of Gold Star Families. So it will be clearly identified, but not a lot of verbiage, very simple verbiage, so that people will look at it, they'll say, "I know what this is."
Mm-hmm. Great. It looks great.
Excellent solution.
So what we'll need, I believe we, I'll speak into the microphone. So moving forward, I believe that we'll need a resolution approving this by the Village Council. If we can prepare that for February 9, just so that we can authorize this, so if you need it for any applications, any grant applications, then, then you'll have that in hand. So February 9, we'll have that to you. Well, actually, the day after, February 10, we'll get a copy of it. And it's good, just so everyone knows, I think part of the, the move on this was because the Village Council had previously approved some work done by the Land Conservancy, and so there was a little bit of a conflict there. So they had, the Conservancy had just finished their project, and, and this came along, and they went, "Oh, no, what are we doing?" So hence this new design, which is just fabulous.
Quick question. How much money do you need to raise?
How much you got?
I'm working on it, though.
The sculptor has committed to creating and installing the entire thing for $150,000. I'm adding on to that an additional undetermined amount of maybe $20,000, $25,000, in case we need permits, licenses, landscaping, miscellaneous expenses. But the cost, we have to generate $150,000. And we're confident that we do that, we can do that. When we first announced this project in September, our friends in the press made a report of it, and we have generated close to $9,000 in private donations from the community, which is an important element in our fundraising, is to make it a community project, get donations from the community. That's going to have to be one very large community to generate $150,000. So we're talking to some major donors. We've already made contact with one of our friends here in town, and there are others around that will, will be contacted. But when I say major donors, I'm talking 25, 50, 75, 100,000, or 150,000 for the whole thing.
Well, that would be nice. What is your timeline of when you want to have this done? What is the sculptor?
Gold Star Mother's Day is a day that was created years and years ago, and amended by President Obama to Gold Star Family Day during Obama's term in office. And that is the last Sunday in September. And you may recall, if you've seen Van Ness Square in September, the Legion has sponsored the Gold Star Families luminaries. We put the luminaries around, and it's really quite impressive, really quite nice. So that, we'll get it done when we get it done. The best-case scenario would be to have it for Memorial Day. I don't think that's possible. For Gold Star Family Day, end of September, I think that's a reasonable shot, given the timeline that the sculptor has given us. There are four payments that we have to make over the period of the construction.
Okay. Thank you.
So, and I will, I, I think we had resolved the issue of permits. There are no permits for this. We would just need the drawings. Do I, and I have that email, so I will forward that to you, so we're all on the same page. Okay. I, I believe that's where we left off with it, so we were good. I think it was just a matter of, and drawings, so that Engineering knew what was happening. So I'll, but I'll forward that email to you. We're good.
Thank you.
All right.
Are you good?
You're good. Thank you so much, and we look forward to helping in any way we can, and we'll get that resolution to you by February 10.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Nice work.
Okay, our first discussion item is under Ridgewood Water, awarding professional services for hydrogeologic consulting services. Ridgewood Water has a proposal from WSP USA to provide professional services to Ridgewood Water in connection with the Capital Improvement Program, Well Maintenance and Testing Program. Together, WSP, service contractors, the selected task order consultants, and Ridgewood Water will work as a team to plan, design, oversee rehabilitation, and new well construction projects. This work will include tasks as, such as well permitting applications, replacement well drilling, well repairs, treatment plans, soil and well testing, production plans, and general services to assist with regulatory compliance and emerging contaminants. W, the recommendation is to hire WSP USA of Upper Saddle River, New Jersey, in an amount not to exceed $138,000. The funding for this is in the Water Utility Operating Budget.
Anyone have any questions?
Is this something we do annually?
No.
So I actually do have one question. There were the scheduling and budget limitations for the 12 wells, they were identified in the first round, and the work was, still, some of the work was outstanding. Can we just get a, a list of what's still outstanding? That would be, I, just, just for our own records, and also...
For the rehabilitation of the wells?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send it to you. I have it highlighted.
That's fine.
Thank you. Yes, that's it. Good.
Heather, could you just explain to me, since we've never done this before, why are we doing this now?
Because we're proceeding with updating wells and making major improvements for water supply, storage, and distribution, so that we will have enough water to be able to, because in the summer months, we always have challenges on very warm summer, during very warm summers to have enough water, because everyone likes to water their lawns, fill their pools, water their plants. So that's why we're doing it.
And we don't anticipate having to do this every year?
These are specific wells. If you look at the proposal, there are specific wells and specific items that are going to be addressed through WSP. So.
Thank you.
I mean, there will be other projects to be done, because there are other wells and other tanks and other places that need to be upgraded, but this is one large project.
Got it. Thank you.
You mentioned emerging contaminants, and I, I see that here in the memo. That includes PFOS, right?
I don't know that this is PFOS-related, though. I mean, yes, we are doing our PFOS cleanup, but we also have lead. I don't see that in here, though, either. So I can, I can get a update from Rich Calby.
Yeah, I wouldn't think lead is an emerging contaminant.
Right.
That's a known contaminant. So I wasn't quite clear on that.
Okay. Next item is award the second year of a two-year contract for water billing and data collection services. Ridgewood Water has utilized the bill and data collection services of Computel out of Shelton, Connecticut. The contract has a remaining option this year for 2022. Ridgewood Water has made changes to its online bill pay and customer engagement, and they'd like to extend the term of this contract on a month-to-month basis, and Computel has agreed to this, not to exceed four months, rather than doing the full 2022 option year in full. They've relied more heavily on Computel's programming, data integration, and reporting capabilities than they have in the past, and with customers transitioning to the more user-friendly online bill paying, they'd like to further itemize required billing and data services, including a fixed hourly rate for programming. Their plan is to go out to bid for billing and data collection services, which is the programming part of it. So the month-to-month, not to exceed four months, is $79,131.68. Obviously, Computel can bid on this when we go out for the proposals, and we have a good working relationship with them, and if they turn out to be the lowest responsible proposal, then certainly we would consider them.
Okay, any questions?
Okay. The next item is awarding a second year of a two-year contract for tree maintenance for Ridgewood Water. The last year was the first year. It was awarded to the sole lowest responsible bidder, which was Downs Tree Service of Hawthorne, New Jersey. It's not to exceed $80,000. The funding is out of the Water Utility Operating Budget.
I'm going to recuse myself from this matter. Kevin Downs is a personal friend, and he and I have worked together for quite a while in bringing in the Ridgewood Christmas tree, so I'm going to sit back on this one.
Okay. The next item is awarding those state contract materials and supplies for maintenance and upkeep of Ridgewood Water facilities. It's the purchase of the materials and supplies under the National Joint Powers Alliance Cooperative Purchasing Contract to Granger of South Plainfield, New Jersey, not to exceed $85,000. The reason we're doing it, even though it's under a cooperative purchasing program, is because it... because it will exceed $17,500. The funding is in the water operating budget.
Questions?
Okay, the next item is for pipe appurtenances and service materials. On December 8th, they received bid proposals for this, for these three items. Total of two bid proposals were picked up and two bid proposals were submitted. The award of bids based upon the low bid total by category on a per-unit basis. So they are recommending award to Ferguson Waterworks of Lakewood, New Jersey for pipe, clamps and sleeves, hydrants and brass in an amount not to exceed $48,000. And to Raritan Group of Edison, New Jersey for boxes in an amount not to exceed $10,000. The funding will be in the 2022 water utility operating budget and the water utility capital budget. So the hydrants are under capital, as well as the blowoffs and the valves. The rest is under the operating budget.
Okay, questions?
I have a question, yes. Raritan, they want to, Ridgewood Water would like to accept their bid for Section F, the boxes only. And it comes to $2,023. And I'm wondering, why do we, in our resolution, award a contract not to exceed $10,000?
Because it's on a per-unit basis.
It's done on a what?
It's a per-unit basis is what these prices are.
I see.
So they're estimating that they may use 10, right?
Gotcha. Or five?
Right, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. The next item is sustainable yard and native plants for new Ridgewood Water headquarters. I know we're just going to briefly discuss this right now and then hopefully next week we'll be able to discuss it more fully. So Councilwoman Perrin?
Yes. Green Ridgewood is putting together a program called Project 1,000 Acres, which would introduce residents to planting native plants and the benefits of that for our ecology, for water conservation and the good that it does for our environment. And Rich and Jill Fazano and I met with one of the founders of the Native Plant Society of New Jersey, Elaine Silverstein. And we looked at the front of the new water utility building on Maple Avenue to see, could we do a showcase of a native plant garden? And so we're working that up. The thing about native plants is you have to buy them from particular nurseries. You can't just walk in. A lot of it is mail order. And we don't have a design yet. Elaine Silverstein is working on it this week. And so we'll be coming back to you with more on this topic, just introducing you to the idea now. It would just be for the front of the Ridgewood Water building and not the whole front, but just parts of it, discreet beds. So we're very excited about it.
This is very smart. I think that we should be doing this all over. The native plants are so important. I think a couple of years ago, I wanted to do a native plant village calendar to just encourage. And I wish actually that you guys would work on that so that maybe, I know Janet's sitting here. Is Janet back there? So maybe we can get that done, too, because it's so important.
And just to manage expectations, when you first put in native plants, they look pretty scraggly.
Yeah.
Then they have to mature. And so it is an exciting project.
Like Pam's question, anytime I've ordered plants from a catalog, I mean, they're literally like two inches, three inches. Is that what we're talking about?
No.
No, they will be larger?
No, I've ordered whole shrubs.
Oh, okay.
You know.
Okay.
You can order trees.
I mean, I have plants that are huge now, but they're, you know, it took 10 years to get that way.
If you look at the memo that's attached for this item, you'll see there's a listing of the various nurseries that sell native plants for our area.
Right.
And you can go on their websites and, oh, it's like Christmas, just, you know, looking at everything they sell.
Okay, all right. Anyone else? Okay, moving on.
Okay, the next item is under parking. It's long-term leasing of village parking spaces for commercial dumpsters at the Chestnut Street Lot. We've utilized a vendor to operate and maintain the dumpster pad in the Chestnut Street Lot. The dumpsters are used by nearby restaurants and one particular retail store and they don't have the proper facilities to store and collect their trash, recyclables and waste oil. The restaurants are supposed to pay the vendor for the privilege to use the pad. The vendor arranges for the dumpsters to be emptied and is supposed to maintain the pad area. The vendor sets his own rates. In the past year, the village has received numerous complaints about the condition of the pad. Vendor has complained that many of the users of the pad are not paying their bills. If the vendor departs, there will be no one to maintain the dumpster area and it will create a mess. When the village last bid out this task, the current vendor was the sole bidder. We, if we don't have the vendor, the restaurants would have no means to properly store their garbage, recyclables, waste oil until it is collected. So what we've done with an ordinance proposal is to say that it would be a procedure where the village would lease out parking spaces in the Chestnut Street Lot, upon which a restaurant can then place and operate their own dumpster and container for waste oil collection and also food scraps and whatever other garbage they may have. The first area to lease out would be the current concrete dumpster pad. The village would then be able to enforce the maintenance of the dumpster areas, as well as know who is responsible for each dumpster area. The restaurant would be responsible for the maintenance and cleanliness for their own dumpsters and will receive, if they don't comply, there would be reminders and then eventually, if they still didn't comply, obviously a summons. The proposed fee is 300 per space per month with a permanent application fee of $100. It has been very much of a challenge for our health department to stay on top of this. They're out there many times and it truly, people, when the dumpster is full or if it's not full and people just get lazy, they just put it on the side. And it's, it's very un, it's not good to look at. It's also very a safety and public health issue, so.
So I just have a question on this.
Uh huh.
I know it's been an ongoing issue. On item number three, if we have the option of removing and disposing any dumpsters or containers placed in that parking space, how are we going to be reimbursed for that? So is there something, I see that they have to pay six months up, I guess in front, every six months?
I have Mr. Reddiser come out because he's the author of the ordinance and I know that he'll give you additional information.
Are you talking about paragraph H3?
Yes.
Okay. H3, sorry, it was up above the H, the non-compliance. Thanks, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
So I see that we have a fee structure and I think if I, I see it, it's just above the fee structure, every six months to re-up. But if we wind up having to take out a dumpster and clean up, that's costly for us. So how are we going to be compensated for that? There must be some violation or fee or something?
We can issue a violation, but what we also do, which we have done in the village, is if we find a wayward dumpster or an improper dumpster, we make it disappear. We had an issue, we had several issues. One year, we had a 30-yard box on a blind corner on a street. They had no permit from the police department. It was a very bad traffic location. I had one of our trucks from the street division hook it and take it away.
So, but I think, though, in this instance, we have to assign a value, an amount, a specific amount, that if in fact a dumpster is, if we're in a position of having to remove and dispose of any dumpsters or containers placed in a parking space, I think that we should have that cost, a cost shifting, back to the person who rented the space. So I think that we should put that in here.
We can put it into the fee schedule as like a dumpster removal if, you know, no change has been in the 60-day period that's indicated here.
I want to jump in here. The problem with multi-party dumpster locations, of which I have one where it's Greek to me is, and we have far fewer people involved in this, literally three. The Chestnut dumpster location has been a problem forever. And what happens here is when restaurants are struggling, as, you know, there's just a natural, putting COVID aside, when they're in trouble, they still pay their meat producer, they still pay their staff. The first things they stop paying are the pest control person and the dumpster, because they can get away with putting that off for a while. And it's when there's just not enough money in the till. And the problem with this idea is that if you take away someone's dumpster, but you allow them to continue operating, all they're going to do is put their trash in someone else's dumpster. So this is something that, any way you look at it, whether it's a multi-party, a single location, or each one has their own location, I think that you have to get the health department involved here, because trash, yeah, trash is an essential part of operating a restaurant. So if you, if you have your trash privileges revoked, then your restaurant license needs to be concomitantly revoked. And my only concern, and you can do that with a multi-party location or a single-party location, the only problem with this is, is that it doesn't solve the problem, it just increased the cost to each restaurant. So while the multi-party location is not optimal either, and it really is, none of these are optimal, it at least keeps the costs more manageable. But at the same time, if someone stops paying, I think we have to revoke their restaurant license.
So I think that then you, so somewhere in this, we need to identify that these are the penalties, because yes, the health department, if you can't dispose of your trash, then I guess you can't have, your, the health department has to be involved and that's a good point. And I guess if it's a multi, you know, I guess the pressure, if it's a multi-user dumpster...
Location, right.
Then the, the location, then the pressure points are going to come from the other users to say to the one person, they're either going to foot the bill, because they're not going to have their, you know, you're not going to do that. And then they'll take their action against the third party or whomever.
Well, with, and again, whether it was, if it's the village operating it or an independent vendor, once that person becomes delinquent by a certain period of time, then the only way to correct the situation, and I hate to say it, is to revoke the restaurant license. Because they can't, it's like, it's like saying you don't have a bathroom. You have to have this in order to remain operational.
Right.
And again, my only concern here is, this doesn't really address the problem. This just increases the cost, whereas if, if we were able to keep our vendor, which I know Chris is trying to do, or, and I don't know if this is possible, if the village became the vendor and we, and we then kept a close tab on, on money's owed, that once they stop paying, they're done.
The challenge is that we don't know who is putting their trash and garbage, not in the dumpster. So by having individual dumpsters, each individual is responsible for their dumpster and their cleanup. In addition, the village does not have the equipment to be able to pick up dumpsters, so we would not be able to do so.
Yes, we can't.
And that's fine. I mean, if we can't do it and we lose our vendor, that's, that's fine. But again, we just have to remember that if you take away their dumpster, you put a lock on their dumpster, that's not the answer. Because again, this is a, this is a, an essential part of operating a restaurant.
And the health department was part of this discussion and they said they were willing and able to go in and close down a restaurant who did not have a dumpster.
You know, so I guess this is an issue of health and safety on a number of fronts, because you can have these dumpsters and just have a mess, that was, which is what we have. And it's interesting to say that the first two items that they stopped paying for are trash collection and pest control, because those are all things that actually impact public health and safety. So it's interesting. But I think that we have to have, you know, have some ability to control this issue and...
That, that was the intent of the ordinance. I really want the dumpster vendor to be successful and to continue, because that's not a task I really want to take on, on behalf of the village. However, he's got to be in business to make money. And if he's not making money, because people are not paying him, as Councilman Vigiano said, and he walks away from us, I feel we need to have an alternative in our back pocket, so to speak, that we can present to these restaurants. Not every restaurant is a problem that uses the pad. It's only a few. And as the councilman says, sometimes the till doesn't have enough to pay and sanitation is the last one on the list. That's unfortunate, but we have to address it because there are complaints. We get complaints all the time. The health department is on top of this constantly and we're looking at this ordinance just to give us something that we can also show the restaurants that, please make it work. Otherwise, you'll have to go to this methodology, which, as was just said, will add to their individual cost. It's not an ordinance that I take great pride in developing and implementing. I feel it's an ordinance that the village needs to protect its interests and the public overall, unfortunately.
And Chris, and I understand, and I think that that's a good plan, because you have to have that plan. In attempting to keep the current vendor, which I think is really the first option, I would recommend that, that he forward a list of people, of restaurants, that are not paying, that are not current. And once they go to a certain point in time, that he's got to forward that to you, to the health department, so that the health department can then revoke their licenses because it's his tipping fees, it's his disposal of the garbage that is costing him so much money. So he's, he's having people dispose of garbage that he's got to pay to get rid of and, and he's not getting any money for it. I think that that would help us to keep this vendor, because it would reduce his expenses. We would help on the enforcement end.
But does that make sense for us, then, to have to police that? I don't, I don't see that we should be policing it.
We are doing that.
Right.
In the weeks prior to the development of this ordinance, due to the issues that we've already discussed, the health department and I have been in touch with the vendor. He has provided a list of who's up to date with their payments. Who is in arrears, how much they are on arrears. And the health department has started to contact restaurants and as part of their inspection process, request that they show how do they manage their garbage recyclables, recyclables, excuse me, and waste oil, with who? This is mostly for the restaurants that use the pad, because they don't have that ability within the confines of their restaurant. And then they were asking also, do you have a current contract? Do you have proof that you're paid up? And that is putting a lot of pressure on the restaurants to come to terms with the vendor or resolve it in some way, shape or form, because they know the health department is on them, is aware of the conditions, so that if they lose the ability to go to that dumpster pad, they may lose the ability to be open for business.
And we don't actually have a choice in policing it, because if we lose the vendor, then we have to police it for ourselves.
Right.
It would be so much better to have the vendor handle this, so that, as Heather said, we don't really want to get involved in all of this mishigash. It would be so much better to be able to do it like this. And I, and I, and again, from a restaurant guy, this is going to have to be more strict... And I, and I, and, and again, from a restaurant guy, this is going to have to be more strictly enforced, because we're going to lose the vendor, because he's losing a fortune on those guys who aren't paying.
We, the vendor has made it very clear who's in arrears, who's a good customer, who pays up, and so forth. They have reasonably good accounting software that keeps track of everything like that. And that information has all been turned over to us and the health, to the health department and myself. The reason I'm involved is because I initially bid it out, the rental of the pad, and the health department at times asks for my assistance in this.
So just a, just a question.
Sure.
More from Paul. So if three restaurants are sharing that, so if, if one of them is in arrears, what stops him from still dumping, because he's still dumping his stuff in?
And, and that, and that's exactly the right question. The only thing that stops him is revocation of his license.
Right.
It is the only thing. And here, here's the.
So that's why, right, okay.
Yeah, the other issue with having this vendor here, and I, and I, and I've asked Chris about, about this. And by the way, that, that pad has been a problem since the day it went into effect. The other thing is that, that all these dumpsters, it's a mess.
Right.
It's always a mess, because, because some transient restaurant employee comes and brings a leaky plastic bag and half throws it in and half throws it out. And, and this vendor is responsible for cleaning that pad on a daily basis. It is a critical aspect of, of health and safety to keep that area clean, because if he hasn't cleaned it every day, in four days, it's a nightmare, an absolute nightmare. So, so that's why I'm saying if we can help this vendor remain profitable, it is in everyone's interest.
Absolutely. The vendor's even told me, he has found that certain restaurants use the cheaper bags. They rip more easily, they discharge their waste more easily. And as the councilman said, the staff who usually takes out the trash is at the bottom of the food chain. They're not as attentive and caring in the proper disposal as may, as we may wish they would. It's unfortunate the way it's been working, and we're trying to correct that.
Okay. All right.
So in the meantime, you know, this, as Mr. Radesha has said, if we introduce this and adopt it, at least we have it ready to go if we need it. But I agree, we need to try to keep our vendor. And I'll make sure the health department is working in conjunction with the current vendor to make sure that the, the, those who are not paying are inspected and told they're going to lose their license.
Okay.
Okay? All right. The next item under parking is parking on Dorimis. The mayor received an email indicating that at the exit of Orchard School, they get stuck in the drop-off traffic. And so it's because as they're exiting Orchard on Dorimis, there's a car that often parks right across from that T intersection. She said it's very dangerous because people are crossing their kids, everyone's racing around trying to get out. So Police Officer Ray Torino of the Traffic Bureau, Mr. Radesha and I met Orchard School principal yesterday at the pickup at Orchard School, or two days ago. We would recommend that there be no parking on Dorimis from Ackerman Avenue to Orchard Place on both sides of the street for one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon during pickup and drop-off times, September through June. We also observed that down at the school itself, the pickup was very smooth, and actually, the school area itself was empty by about 3:15 PM. And the children do get out of school at three. So it was, it was flying down by the school, up by the intersection. It was obviously a little bit, it took a while for people to get out, because there were lines and, you know, some are making left, some are making right, so, and there were cars parked along Orchard as well. But we do believe that by removing the cars from that area, people will be, as they're pulling out, either left or right, will be able to see more clearly if there are oncoming cars, and will be able to exit more, you know, quicker.
So, and, and parking in that T anyway, it's technically parking in the intersection?
That is correct, it's technically prohibited, but that's one of the very minuscule portions of the driver's manual that nobody understands. I've had some email conversations with Patrolman Ray Torino, who had accompanied Heather and myself. We're looking at the section of the village code that we feel would best implement what Heather just mentioned. And then I guess we'll prepare an ordinance for the council's consideration in whatever.
For February, right.
February, okay, for February.
Is everybody okay with that? Okay.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. Thank you for actually doing that so quickly, appreciate it.
No problem. Officer Torino had said he, he'd been out there a number of times
I know.
in, over the last four, five months. The Traffic Safety Bureau had gotten some concerns about the issue, so they were on top of it. He was an excellent guide and really helped Heather and I see it very clearly, how it works and where we think this minor ordinance could improve things.
All right, so and, and of course, anything we do, we'll send out and notify, right?
If you would like, we can send a letter to the, the neighbors.
Yeah, I, I think that we always, I, I think we've learned from our past experience that that is best practice, just so everyone understands that there's going to be somewhat of a change. So why don't we do that?
Okay.
Usually, usually we introduce the ordinance and then send it out and give them the date of the public hearing.
Right.
And tell them that if they wish to come and speak, they may do so.
Right, that's fine.
Okay, I'll, I'll coordinate
just so we make sure we don't let that fall through the cracks.
The letter mailing with, I guess, with Heather, as the date when it's hearing, so that date of the hearing can be in the notification letter.
Very good.
And that'll go to all the people who live in the neighborhood?
That would go to the homes on the, that would be affected and possibly immediately adjacent.
Great.
Based on what we looked at, it's maybe no more than 20, 30 homes.
Thank you. Should, should we also ask the principal to let parents of the schoolchildren know that this is in the offing?
We'll let the principal know when the ordinance is going to be heard. She's very good at communicating with her parents. She came right out and met with us and explained things. She's more knowledgeable about the circumstances there than we could pretend to be.
Thank you.
Sure. The next item is under budget. It's the Pickleball Courts Acoustical Soundproofing. As you recall, we discussed at our prior meeting that we have found an exterior-grade quilted fiberglass absorber, which reduces the reflection of the sound waves by covering reflective surfaces with a suitable, porous, sound-absorbing product. And then we would take the acoustics blocks and put them on the outside of the pickleball courts. So three quotes were obtained, and Recreation is recommending the award to Acoustical Surfaces, Inc. of North Chaska, Minnesota, in an amount not to exceed $22,690.30. And we did find funding from a previous capital ordinance. So we can consider this resolution of award at February 9th.
So Heather, I actually have a couple more questions about this.
Okay.
Because when I looked at the paperwork for the, the acoustical, what is the name of this one? Let me just see it, the Acoustical Services.
Uh huh.
And I looked at the others, I just want to find this. I was looking at the difference in pricing, so there was a big difference.
I had the same question.
On the quotes, but, and I want to get to this, so just, I don't want to lose my, my train of thought. So on, when I started to look at the documents from each and started to look at the, the price differentials.
Right.
I realized that there is what is an industry, 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 I didn't even say that word, standard of NRC, and then there's an NRC rating, and then there is an NRC and a STC rating. And on the NRC rating, on the, one of them is, so the coefficient rating, the noise reduction coefficient is from zero to one. And on one of the more expensive, expensive products, it's a .75, and the other one is one, so that one being the best. And the STC rating actually breaks down the STC rankings from, I, I think it was up to 50, so it, it was like a 10-point range, which identified hearing a very, not very effective, meaning you can hear voices clearly and hear what they're saying. A sound transmission class rating of 38, which is one of them, is loud speech that can be heard but hardly intelligible. And then it goes on to 50, which is the most sound reduction possible. So it's the highest level of, the highest sound transmission class at that ranking. But the one that we're getting for the, whatever, 22,000, 26,000, those rank, those rates, that, that NRC and STC are nowhere on their paperwork. So I'm wondering if we shouldn't, because, you know, we don't want to, we want to make sure we get this done right. And so I think we should get ahold of these people and ask them for those industry standard ratings on both the STC and the, whatever was the other one I just said? What was I just said?
NRC.
NRC, thank you.
NRC and STC.
So I, I just, I hate to see us spend $25,000 and then wind up with, with nothing.
Right. Okay, we'll get that.
And I thought Nancy was going to come back to us. Wasn't there a question whether she was showing us the one inch or the two inch?
She did email, and she said the one she showed us, because it was the one inch and the, no, a two-inch and a five-inch or four-inch, and the one that she was showing us was actually the thicker one. So she was showing us the thicker one, but I don't see those, those standard ratings, and it, you can look into that and see what it all is.
And is there anywhere, like, I mean, how do we know this works? Like, I don't, I don't want to approve of anything without having backup.
Yeah, well, I'm not disagreeing with that, but I think the first order of business is to find out why we see ratings on two of them, but not the one that we're getting, because that could mean the difference in effectiveness and being completely ineffective, and we've just thrown away $26,000, which we don't want to do.
Right.
Well, we'll find out.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, we can go from there. Okay.
Yep.
So the next item under budget is for award professional services for land surveying. This is an annual resolution with Daniel Dunn of Dunn Surveying and Mapping of Waldwick, New Jersey. The quote for the retainer is $1,700, and it's been the same for approximately the last 12 years. We, the retainer provides the village with a New Jersey professional land surveyor to endorse our tax maps and provide the license coverage for the survey work the staff of the engineering division prepares for various construction projects and regulatory submittals. It's a fixed fee and does not have hours billed against it.
Questions?
Okay, the next item is a cooperative purchasing contract for parts and services for Fleet. There was various parts, materials, and supplies that are necessary and used to keep the village's equipment and vehicles operational. The purchases are through the New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Program or other various cooperatives. For 2021, the Fleet Division exceeded the previously awarded amounts for parts because the cost for parts in 2021 skyrocketed due to the pandemic and supply-side issues. So this is to consider a resolution to award additional funds in the amount of $80,000 to close out Fleet's 2021 purchases of parts from various vendors.
Questions?
Okay, the next item is untreated rock salt in bulk. So this is village purchase through the Bergen County Cooperative Purchasing Program. It's a resolution to exceed the statutory limit for the initial purchase of salt for the winter ice and snow road maintenance. This year's quote for rock salt is $75 per ton, when last year's quote was $54.41 a ton. That's a $20.59 per ton increase, again, probably due to supply-side issues. So the award is to Atlantic Salt, Inc. of Lowell, Mass. The initial award is not to exceed $140,000, and it's from the street's operating budget.
Questions?
If, I have a question. If we have a really warm winter and we don't use the salt, we keep it, right, and we use it the next year?
Yeah, he's coming up.
Good evening again. To your question, if we don't use it, hallelujah, we keep the salt bins full. Our salt storage capacity in the village is very small. I wish it was much larger. So we, a lot of times, use just-in-time delivery. Like, if we have a couple storms back-to-back, we may have to put a loader operator on, on the weekend just to take the salt, because they'll deliver on a Saturday. Right now, we're ready for this weekend's event, our bins are full. As soon as we see our bins going down because we've used it, we order more. If we get towards the end of March, things look nice and warm, we'll hold off on ordering. Whatever we don't use for one winter, we cover with tarps, that's what the DEP requires. We put hay bales in front, so it doesn't get water on it and then run into our stormwater system, and we'll just use it the following year. I hope that answers the question.
Yep.
Okay, just stay there, because you have a few coming up, so it'll be easier. The next one is the upgrade to replace firewalls for the IT department. This is for the village hall and the water department facility. It's to replace the current firewalls, because they've reached their useful life of five-plus years. They will be replaced with an updated model that consists of more security measures that will help in protecting our IT infrastructure. It's under state contract to SHI International Corporation of Somerset, New Jersey, in an amount not to exceed $24,530.30. The funding will be from both the IT capital budget and the water capital budget. Our next item is purchase of service contract for access control and CCTV. It's a two-year contract with SecureWatch of Munawki, New Jersey, for service licensing fees for, as I said, CCTV, access control, and the panic alarm system. We have a new security system running over 300 points of contact. This system needs continuous technical support, either from software updates, hardware repairs, and licensing renewals. The pricing is offered under the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, and the amount, actually, in this memo is incorrect. The contract is $50,754 for two years. We have agreed with SecureWatch to a one-year contract with a one-year renewal. And so that $50,754 would be half for 2022, and then if we decide to renew for 2023, the other half would be paid.
Thank you, that was my question.
The next item is increased nursing hours for COVID mitigation efforts. Due to COVID-19 pandemic and the increased hours required to investigate cases and contact trace, the amount allocated to pay Valley Community Health for routine nursing services is going to surpass the amount of the initial contract. The federal government grant will cover the case investigation as well as contact tracing and planning, but it will not cover the clinics that we hold. The request is to provide funds to cover the additional nursing costs for 2022 at a rate of $49.39 per hour for up to 480 hours for $23,707. The nursing services are through Valley Hospital, Department of Community Health, and Community Benefit of Ridgewood, New Jersey.
Question?
Heather, what level of nursing is this? We talk in LPN, RN?
These are, these are the nurses who help at the clinics. They are registered nurses with Valley Community Health. And I don't know if they're LPM or RN, I can find out if that matters, but they have been the ones helping at our clinics. They help with the child care conferences, health conferences. They help with our blood pressure clinics that we hold on a monthly basis. So we normally have them for those items. Now we have them for these COVID items as well. They've helped tremendously, as she mentioned, with the contact tracing and case investigations. So if you want, I can find out what they are, either LPN or RN. Okay, anything else? All right, the next is release of escrowed funds, and this is for our person who ran the coffee concession at the train station. It's B Powers LLC, doing business as Flo's Market. The coffee concession wasn't feasible to continue because of the fact that The coffee concession wasn't feasible to continue because of the fact that there's a lack of customers commuting to New York City. And in addition, the trains did not allow beverages to be drunk on the train or food to be eaten on the train. So it's a resolution to release the $1,500 in escrow cash funds back to B Powers LLC. Okay, the next item is a refund of a tax overpayment for one of our properties. Both the mortgage company and the title company paid the fourth quarter taxes, and so the mortgage company is requesting a refund of that overpayment.
Any questions?
I just, what kind of property? What property is this? I mean, that's like $200,000 a year in taxes. Is that number correct?
I'll find out where the property, I, oh, it's 125 to 161 South Maple.
Oh, so it's probably like a business.
So commercial, I guess.
Core logic.
Right.
Do you know what that is, Chris?
125 to 127, did you say?
125 to 161 South Maple.
Oh, I think that's the Pilates place or whatever.
We can find out exactly where it is, but obviously, it's a commercial building.
Okay. It just sounded like a lot of money.
That's why they want it back.
That's a good point.
Exactly.
The next item is policy. The first item's been removed from the agenda. The next is stormwater management for Hope Street, Spring Avenue, and Evergreen Place. Mr. Roder Sauer is here to discuss that. I know Councilwoman Perrin asked for this to be put on the agenda.
All right, good evening again. The Hope Spring area suffered a little bit of, or a lot of stormwater damage from Storm Ida, and I believe maybe Henry earlier in 2021. Our office has investigated the existing stormwater collection system in that area. It is an older system. It has a finite capacity, and unfortunately, when that capacity is exceeded, the local area gets some flooding. We have done a lot of work in that area. One of the things that's been very helpful is the council funded a back truck. We've used it a bunch of times, not last year, I believe, but the year before. We cleaned out one of their major drain lines, and the report from Peter in my office was lots of debris, two dead raccoons, et cetera, et cetera. So there is, so we know we have to be more on top of the system. With the tools that we do have now, we can do a better job. We've also looked at how the water flows in that area. We have some ideas to improve inlet capacity in the Hope and Spring intersection, change some of the catch basins, make them a little bit bigger. We've already installed three or four graded manhole covers on the storm system. That's already been done. That'll help inflow. We've also looked at a contributory area, which is Spring and South Maple. Again, Peter in office has made a suggestion that we improve some of the flow there to capture the overland flow that would normally come down Spring, hit the Hope and Spring intersection, and add to the quantity of water that needs to be removed from there. Those are, again, improvements we look at right now. They're minor, but they can have a good effect on reducing the magnitude of flooding. They're not going to solve the flooding in major events. An Ida, a Floyd, an Irene, we're still going to have flooding. To totally eliminate flooding in that, in those types of events, would be a significant financial undertaking for the village. We have made a capital funding request for storm drainage systems improvements. It made it past the first round of budgets discussions among the department heads, and will be presented to the council shortly. Another thing we also looked at is there's a 48-inch diameter county storm sewer that's just a little bit north of that intersection that discharges in the Hoakus Brook. We think it might benefit if we put a tide gate or a tide flex device on its outfall. Those are devices that are designed so that if the water level rises, they close off discharge from the pipe, so you don't have a backwater effect and get the water from the river to come back onto the streets. You will still get flooding in the streets, because that water's not going to be removed, but you won't get massive flooding from the river itself. It's something we want to investigate. We think it may be beneficial. We do have such a device on the storm sewers that drain the village hall parking lot into the Hoakus Brook. They have helped reduce the flooding in the parking lot, because when the brook comes up, they close, and they don't flood the parking lot with the water from the brook. So we, we have experience that they are successful. There's also been some discussion as to the drainage system in that area. Our investigation shows that Evergreen is roughly the demarcation line on Hope Street. North of Evergreen, north of, Hope, north of Evergreen goes into the county system. South of Evergreen, Hope, goes into Hope and Spring system that leads down to the silt chamber at the north end of Hopper on Cedar, and then goes through the ponds in the Hopper Ridge condominium to go further down behind the homes on Hopper Avenue and then into Grove Street. That's a quick overview. We also took a look at our list of drainage issues in the village. We tallied up about 45 known drainage problems, and these are drainage problems that are unrelated to the flood hazard areas of the village. Some are minor, some are larger, like the Hope and Spring. Ask funding is available. We try to address these. We have several projects with the operational staff right now, which are trying to get a storm sewer line behind the homes in Ackerman and Bel Air cleaned, so that flows better. That, too, was a problem that was brought to our attention as a result of Ida, and we have other things like that. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them as best as I can.
So, Chris, when we're talking about the less significant funding remedies, how much money are we talking about for the less significant funding remedies and the more significant funding remedies?
The three items I talked about, I think that's in the realm of probably about $100, $150,000.
Total?
All three.
And, and you mentioned that to really work on eliminating this for significant weather events, it would be very significant. What are we, what are we talking about doing there?
I think we could possibly be in the range of a million to a million. Most of our storm drainage system in the village is geared to 10 and maybe 25-year storm cycles, intensity storm, excuse me. That's the engineer speak for it. However, at the time these systems were designed 100 years ago, we were having less intense storms. Is it climate change, the weather, whatever? We're getting more intense storms. The 100-year storm rainfall quantity has been bumped up. It used to be about seven and a half, now it's about 8.3, 8.8 inches. So we're getting more water, we're getting it more quicker. So that means we need to consider larger piping.
So, so we're talking about larger piping?
If necessary, yes.
And, and this is in the million to $2 million range, you think?
It could easily be in that range, because from the Hope and Spring area, there's a slight ridge that is basically South Irving Street before it drops off on the east side back down to the Hoakus Brook. One of the challenges with the Hoakus Brook is it floods very quickly. We experience that here all the time at Village Hall. We're in a flood zone. But it does drain quickly. So the challenge is we have to look at is, how can we get water away from an area into the brook and not exacerbate the flooding conditions in the brook? And that gets to be the challenge.
And I'm just wondering, given as you point out that the 100-year flood occurs every five or six years or so.
So it seems, yes.
Yeah, how many, how many homes are affected by this?
Village-wide?
No, 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 no. We're just talking, this, Hope and Spring. Because I know every, every area is different. So in the Hope and Spring problem, if, if we're going to, if, if homes are going to be flooded out every, you know, X number of years as opposed to once every 100 years, again, what are we talking about? 20 homes, 50 homes, 100 homes?
I'd have to say it's probably in the 80 to 150 homes. The thing also we have to keep in mind, the area of Hope and Spring we're discussing is not in the flood hazard area, because we do have that ridge I just mentioned, a topographic ridge. The flood hazard area is on the east side of that for the Hoakus Brook. So this is not a flood hazard area. Homeowners here would not be obligated to buy flood insurance by their mortgage companies. They could buy it on their own if they so choose, but no one buys insurance that they don't anticipate they need.
Right, but how, how many times have they been flooded out in the, you know, since, let's, let's say, just go back to Floyd in 99?
I would say probably Floyd, Irene, Ida. Notice the tendency we name our storms. The April 2007 storm, an unnamed storm, that went deposited about eight inches of rain in the village on 24 hours. But because its intensity was relatively moderate, it didn't cause a lot of flooding. It did have a lot of water, but again, the intensity was lessened, so the flooding was lessened.
But would you say that those other three storms in the last 20 years, 80 to 150 homes roughly were flooded in each of those storms?
I would, I would, yes, yes. I haven't added them up, I haven't done an exact count.
And, and obviously, this is something that the council has to discuss in terms of investment, but do you believe that that investment in upgrading the infrastructure in that area would, in those instances, in those extreme instances, and there's always going to be a more extreme instance, but the instances we had, would that address those problems, do you think? Look in your crystal ball, I know that there's, you know, no, no clear answer.
Typical engineering perspective, it would considerably, it would help considerably, but it's not a guarantee.
Right, there's no guarantees.
There is a lot of variables in flooding. The key one that Ida was an example of that I mentioned is intensity. You get six inches of rain in 24 hours, minor problem. You get six inches of rain in an hour and a half, two hours, major, major problem. It comes down so quick, catches everybody by surprise, and Ida was very much a storm that caught everybody by surprise.
Got it, thank you, Chris.
There's an article that I would like to share with the rest of the council that I read within the last week, that New Jersey's going to be giving out like a billion dollars worth of grants to improve stormwater infrastructure. The need, though, is more like $30 billion. And if I am reading between the lines correctly, the people who are going to get, the towns that are going to get those grants are the towns that put up a stormwater utility. No town, you know, that law passed two years ago, maybe, for stormwater utilities, no town in New Jersey has adopted a stormwater utility yet. But the pressure is on, I think, for us to do that. So I just wanted to mention that. And on top of it, I, I understand that FEMA is going to be redesignating what's a flood plain and expanding those areas.
Again, they just did it. We just went through that, right?
I think they just issued maps in 2017 to 2018, and they're not perfect. They did make a mistake. They included quite a number of properties in the village at the very north end of North Maple Avenue in the flood hazard area, when they are technically, by pure hydraulic analysis, not. I, myself and another engineer on behalf of a property owner in that area have been petitioning DEP and FEMA to correct their mapping. My colleague has gotten unofficial feedback that, yeah, we made a boo-boo. And then he asked, well, you going to fix it? Uh, no. But what it is, is, I don't mean to sound flippant, because this has serious impacts to those homeowners, because their mortgage companies are now telling them they have to pay flood insurance, and they are flabbergasted that they suddenly have to pay flood insurance where they never did before. So it does have a major impact when the reaches of the flood hazard area changes. FEMA does update the maps usually every 10 years or so.
Yeah, and, and actually, it's not just that they're required then to have flood insurance, it also potentially impacts their property value. They thought they had one thing, and then they're finding out they have something else, and through no fault of their own, and it's, it's just an error. So it was a serious, it was a serious issue, and it should have been resolved at this point.
It's an issue both property values, and it's also an issue if you want to do any improvements in your home. Because now, all your utilities, like your air-conditioned compressor, has to be elevated outside of flood hazard area elevation, where maybe in the past, you didn't have that.
Right. And presently, they're grandfathered, and right now, they're grandfathered, so they're okay, but if they do those, they have to update that way.
Correct.
So it really, it's something that, you know, we, we have to go in our eyes open, know what's going on.
And then also, the DEP Commissioner, Sean LaTuret, was saying at a, at a League of Municipalities webinar the other day, that the DEP is planning to change their standards, because they recognize that what's a 100-year flood, what's a 500-year flood is based on old data, and they have to recalibrate all that for, for the new floods that we're experiencing.
That's what we're seeing with the, the quantity that had been the benchmark for 100-year storm. That amount of rainfall has now moved up almost an inch, because time has proven that, or as the councilman said, we seem to be having a 100-year storm every five years.
Yeah, that's going to change insurance.
It just doesn't work too well probability-wise.
So that affects how we schedule and plan our, our infrastructure, and it makes it difficult for insurance, too.
You're correct, absolutely correct.
So I, I think it's an issue we're going to be visiting again and again.
It's going to be an issue. Unless we go into a sudden drought for an extended period of time, it's with us.
And so we're still looking at a, the potential for a modification to detail application on that other matter, so is that something?
That would be an operations item, too.
Oh, did I get that? Did I jump the gun?
No.
Do we want to jump to that? That's up to.
Yeah, so you, yeah, so I was going to say, why don't you discuss under operations stormwater management, Hopper Ridge condominium?
Oh, okay, sorry about that, but that's.
Go ahead.
So now I'll go on to the, a modification of detail application. Go ahead.
Very good segue, Mayor. The other item on the agenda is Hopper Ridge condominiums. They came before the planning board. They have to replace their retaining walls, because behind them, they have a sanitary sewer line. If the retaining walls fail, there's a good, very high likelihood their sanitary sewer lines will fail, and there'll be a resultant release of effluent, not a pleasant topic. In, after the planning board, they had to make applications to DEP for stream encroachment, freshwater wetlands, I believe. It came to their attention of their engineer, T. Bor, from Conklin Associates, that it might be a good opportunity to partner with the village. I agree. I'm just not ready to partner with them. However, we didn't divorce ourselves from Hopper Ridge, but we let them go and continue to get the permit to do the work they need to do, because we don't want to be a delay in their wall replacement. When the village is ready in a more larger drainage area scale, we may definitely discuss with Hopper Ridge utilizing their detention basins or their basins as a detention system for stormwater runoff. That would work if we increase the flow from the Hope and Spring area and that drainage area. If we get more water off the streets, the properties in that area quicker, we have to deal with it some way before it gets to be a big problem downstream, which is generally the backyards of the houses along Hopper Avenue. That opportunity there is then to work with Hopper Ridge to store that water, design an outlet structure better than they currently have, to then release that water to basically attenuate the peak flows and hold the water, but not cause any detrimental flooding worse than what already is experienced downstream at Hopper Ridge. The flow from Hopper Ridge goes behind those properties, as I said, then into a stormline in Grove Street and into the Hoakus Brook.
Yeah, so I, I think it was the best decision to let them proceed with their application and, and take the, the approach that we're taking. Just as a reminder, which was the, the pond that we actually had them restore the depth to?
I'd have to go look at the, because they have like three ponds in series that are interconnected.
Right, and so the one, because of the buildup, they, so they're going to. Right, and so the one, because of the buildup, they, so they're going to restore the depths, which actually helps all of that, too.
Yeah, they're, I believe they're gonna, they're looking at dredging or wanting to dredge one pond.
Right.
I do know that for them, it's a cost item. We did, I did make an inquiry with Bergen County Mosquito Control because they, they have helped the village tremendously with their Longreach excavator. They did the dredging work over at King's Pond. We also borrow their machine every year to help shape up Great Pool before the season starts. But they had said that that's a private property and they wouldn't be able to do that kind of effort that they do for us in the village.
Do you recall which pond that was, that we were having them restore the, the original capacity? Okay, it doesn't matter.
I don't.
All right, so I, in any event, I, I think that, that we're good, right? We're, you know, this is the best approach.
If, you know, going forward with Hopper Ridge, if we come to an agreement with them and any work is to occur, there'll obviously be an additional capital funding for you folks in the council to consider.
When you say partner with them once they get their permits, what does that mean?
The original was, you know, help each other out. Now we're gonna let them go, but if we need their assistance, there may be some kind of terms that we have to negotiate with the condominium complex. Whether it's maintenance in lieu of the value or a trade-off in some sort. They have an asset that can help the village. It'll have a value of some sort to the village and to them. So there's gonna be a negotiated agreement somewhere along the line.
So are you saying that somewhere down the road, we might pay them to help them upgrade their detention basins to allow us the opportunity to utilize them to help with flooding in the surrounding area?
Absolutely. It might be whether the village pays or the village takes over maintenance of it. Again, that's, those are all negotiated topics.
Got it, but that's what you mean by partnering?
Yes.
And would this, I'm so sorry.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Would this, would this affect the Hope Street flooding? Because I know it's right there.
The intent would be, as I said a few minutes ago, if we improved the removal of water of Hope and, from Hope and Spring, it's going to go to Hopper Ridge. We have to then address it in Hopper Ridge.
Got it.
So we, we don't take the problem from one area, move it to Hopper Ridge. But Hopper Ridge is not going to be a problem because the way their current system is configured, it just moves downstream to the properties behind Hopper Avenue and there we already have flooding complaints.
And, and how far down the road might we be looking at this discussion?
Uh, calendar-wise?
Yeah.
Uh, probably might be a budget item for capital 2023 or 2024.
Because it'll take them that long to get their permits?
Uh, no, they got their permits for their wall work. They needed those, they need to go to construction this spring. And the discussion that was undertaken with us in the village, while very informative and educational, I was just not ready to commit on behalf of the village, principally because I don't have any capital to back any of that up. We don't have any agreements. You folks in the council haven't been apprised of what is intended here.
And I think in fairness, that while we weren't, or you weren't, the village wasn't prepared to move forward, even though we understand that the ponds are, are underutilized. I think the bigger issue at hand was the time is of the essence matter as it pertains to the wall and their application to the, to that, to get that whole thing done.
Yeah, DEP, you're correct, Mayor. In the conversations T. Bor had with DEP, they weren't gonna stop the clock, as I understand it. And if they were gonna stop the clock, they wanted a sec, an additional application fee. So we were up at a very critical time crunch and we, or the village did not want to be an impediment to fixing the retaining walls.
Yeah, I, I think that the liability was probably, and plus, you know, while we were hearing from some people, there were other people that were potentially in harm's way. So we certainly didn't want to compromise their properties or, or the sewer line or anything. So it was best to move this forward, let them do their thing and get that taken care of and, and not stop that. I, I think that that was critical and that's why we left it open that we could do that modification to detail.
There is, this, I believe there's still an ability to partner with them. They still do have a, a very wonderful asset for stormwater management. It remains to be seen how, as I said, we can negotiate a satisfactory arrangement between the condominium association and the village.
And just so I understand, if, if in the future we were to be able to take off some of the water from Spring and Hope to funnel them to those three ponds, it would be only the water from Evergreen and Hope southward? Because Evergreen's kind of a high point.
Evergreen is kind of a little bit of a ridge line.
Yeah.
However, those ridge lines are easily bypassed by adding a length of pipe. If we go through a hydraulic analysis that says the Hopper Ridge ponds, after agreement with Hopper Ridge, can handle a certain quantity of flow, the best improvements Hope and Spring does only does that quantity, but not quite that amount, we could look to see if we can change the direction of runoff from any of the other pipes with short pipe segments. Like, I'm proposing improving the catch basins at Spring and South Maple to get more of the flow off the street there into the county system and reduce that amount of flow going down to Spring. That's an initial improvement I'd like to do with the funding this year. If the design calculations show that the Hopper Ridge ponds, with whatever conditions we work with, can handle more flow, we can look that, put in sections of pipe, we can look at changing things to direct more flow there. That is always a possibility.
Even from the north end of Hope?
Yes.
Interesting.
Is the, is the $150,000 for the less significant improvements, is that in your budget proposal for this year?
Uh, we had asked for more, but I think we, in the nice little meeting called Capital Budget, I think I came out of it with about $150,000. That will be presented to you folks. You folks in the council can still decide whether it merits consideration or not. That's, that's your bailiwick.
Got it, so we'll be discussing this in a couple of weeks.
Yes, as you'll be discussing every department head's request for funding.
Got it, well, thanks for bringing us up to speed so that we can have a better handle on this in a couple of weeks.
Yep, we'll be back.
Sounds good.
Okay, we'll go back to policy. The next item is amending Chapter 222 Power Tools Landscaping and Yard Maintenance Equipment. There's been a request to change the commercial use of power tools to any tools because there are times when contractors are using hammers or things that aren't powered, but, you know, it's a constant banging or a constant noise from these construction crews. In addition, we have to add Juneteenth to the federal holidays listed in this ordinance. I know that Mayor Newton had received some requests for this, so I don't know if you want to discuss it?
Yeah, I think that the other thing that has come up, and it, it comes up because of the, you know, on a Saturday, I think a lot of folks, you know, they hear the equipment and then after 1 o'clock, they hear hammering for hours on end. And it, we have so much construction going on that we get a lot of feedback on this. So it also came up that, I guess, the type of construction vehicles, excavation equipment, with the backup warning signals, any kind of commercial, and I guess it would be defined as all commercial use of power and hand tools and, and that would include end vehicles, including excavation equipment. And the other thing that has been popping up a couple of times is that the 7:30 start time, because in other municipalities, it's actually 8:00 a.m. on weekdays. So I don't know where we got the 7:30 from.
I think it was because especially in the warmer months, it, you know, gets hot early and it gave a little time to be able to get up and going before that timeframe. Because we do make them stop by 6:00. And there's a lot of daylight still during, during summer months.
Well, I leave it to everybody if we think that it can go from 7:30 to 8:00 a.m. It's up for discussion, it's just, these are the kind of notes. And then, of course, I think I typed in Juneteenth on that, right? I did? Yes, okay, good.
Is the current change being considered just to any tools from power tools? Is that what we're talking about?
So it would be the commercial use of any power and hand tools and excavation and commercial equipment. Because in some instances, we get commercial equipment that's causing the beeping, beeping, but that doesn't get covered in, I guess, power tools. It's technically not a power tool, but I don't actually even know the technical term for that.
So we're just expanding the scope of the type of tools and equipment being used?
Types of tools and equipment. And I think because while we say, okay, you don't hear the power saw going, but you could hear the excavation beeping, you can hear the vehicles beeping, you can hear hammers going until, you know, all hours of the night. And so the question is whether, how we, how do we, and I, I leave it to everybody to, to create the language that identifies the type of, and this is commercial use. It's not like, like, you know, Pam decided to go up on the roof and fix a couple of shingles.
No, this sounds, this sounds like a- I, I think I might pay for that, by the way, just to see Pam fixing shingles on the roof. Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with expanding the scope of the tools involved because, you know, we've all heard that backup beeping sound. I, I'm more hesitant to change the time. I'm not, I'm not locked into the, into that idea, but I'm, Heather raises a good point. And so I think that, that the 7:30 to 6:00 p.m. is a reasonable time for people to be using all kinds of equipment. So I don't have a problem with this change.
Okay.
Um, this says commercial, it wouldn't affect PSENG, would it?
No.
We can't regulate it.
Yeah, you can't regulate it.
Okay.
So I think that the, and I just want to point out the one thing about the 7:30 versus 8: I think some of us have been early in the morning where suddenly somebody is cutting down a tree and it's, you know, all of a sudden you got the chainsaws and everything else and it's 7:30 in the morning and it's a disruption to morning hours. So I kind of, I sort of like the 8:00 a.m., I'm not locked into either or. But I also, I, I did want to share that one of the issues that comes up often is that people don't know, like, folks don't know what the hours are.
That's right.
And so they are, like, how do I even do this? So I think we have to get this word out. And procedurally, if somebody is on a Saturday afternoon, now, for instance, on Saturdays, I believe that landscapers' use of commercial equipment, leaf blowers, et cetera, after 1:00 p.m. is prohibited. Yet I see so many landscapers out every Saturday afternoon, the, the streets are lined with it and people start calling and you're, you're instructing them to call, you know, the non-emergency number or do something. I think we have to really tell people what they need to do and what the rules are. On, but for both sides, I think for both sides.
I couldn't agree with you more. We, I mean, we, we do a lot of great things here and, and we have to, I think we can do an even better job in getting the word out. And there'll always be somebody who doesn't get it, but no, I agree with you completely.
Heather, for a landscaping company to work here, they have to have a permit, right? They have to register with the town?
No, we can't do that anymore.
Oh.
No.
Well, it was prohibited, right?
Right.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Wow, that was a, when did that happen?
Like, five years ago, four years ago.
Oh, okay. Because, I mean, the landscape, I, I have told many a landscaper on a Saturday at 3:00, hey, you're not allowed to do this past 1:00. And they're like, what you gonna do? You know?
So, and I, I think that's a question. Because I, I think people say, well, what am I supposed to do? So people are sitting, you know, on a Saturday afternoon and, you know, they're getting the whole thing going all day, it's their only day off and, and, you know, they're trying to relax or do whatever. And then after 1:00, they don't, some people don't realize that we have an ordinance that, that says it has to stop at, at 1:00 p.m. And then, but people that do or start complaining about the noise, it's like, okay, well, it's after 1:00. And then you have to instruct them what to do. And so I, I wonder, you know, we just need to make this known to people?
It's actually in our village calendar every year, too.
I know.
And so say, say it's past 1:00 and somebody's, you know, you tell somebody you're not allowed to mow the lawn after 1:00 on a Saturday as a-
Commercial, not a, not a-
A commercial, right. And you call the police? Does, did the police come in?
You can call the police, yes.
And can they, will they get a fine? Or just the police say you can't?
They'll probably tell them not to continue if they refuse to stop.
Yeah, they'll come along and move them along.
Yeah.
They'll just, I mean-
And then they'll go to the next house and do, mow their house.
They may, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess the question, then the question-
I'm gonna think that if a Ridgewood cop says to you, you can't do this in town, that, that the landscapers are gonna say, okay, fine, I'll leave town. I, I'm gonna think that that's gonna happen.
So why don't we do this, Heather? Why don't we, maybe we can clean this up, get our, our language how we want it and then bring it back to our next work session? Does that make sense?
Next week, okay.
This way we clean it up and, and have something a little bit more than just my little typed in. Does anybody have my typed in notes or something on there, right? For Juneteenth and stuff?
Are they in parentheses? I see Juneteenth and I see any tools in parentheses.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was my, and then I typed another note, so you don't see my other notes as I was typing along. Okay, good, all right, that's fine.
Okay, the next item is pickleball days and hours. You have the resolution, which we adopted in November. So for Glenn Pickleball Courts, it's Sunday, 11:00 to 6:00, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. No pickleball play on Mondays and Fridays.
And that would be for another six months?
Until, until such time as they are modified by resolution.
So this is no change from what is current? Is that correct?
This is the current.
This is the current.
This is, she's giving us something to compare it to. And, and I'll tell you, given that Mike is not here, and I know Mike has, is gonna have some impact on this, I would recommend that we move this to our February 2nd work session-
Okay, we can do that.
So he can be involved in that.
I'd like to hear from Nancy Beigos about the, the standards, too, on the soundproofing.
Yeah, I'm kind of, and I'm just wondering, and I, because we just did this, I think, November 10th. This is recent and we had a whole bunch of folks here on both sides of the, the discussion. But we also said that we were going to attempt to put in a system that further mitigated the noise and we haven't gotten there yet. So I almost feel like, are we, are we putting the cart before the horse here because we don't know the outcome? And, and if, if, in fact, the game is to go ahead and just do this, then, then, and just say, oh, yeah, we're gonna do this, and we don't know the outcome of the sound mitigating efforts, then why spend that money to mitigate the sound if we're just gonna say, okay, we don't care? Let's just put the hours back. So why spend the money? Why even have Parks and Rec go looking for anything? Why find out industry standards? Why do any of it if the effort is just to say, we're gonna put this back and, too bad, tough luck, everyone?
Well, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a tough luck issue. I think that several of us have gone around. I actually live in the neighborhood. And, you know, after spending some more time looking at this, and I don't want to get into the whole thing now because, you know, then we'll just do it again later, that perhaps the issue isn't quite as egregious as has been sometimes represented to us. And, but that doesn't mean that we don't want to make it as good as possible. So that's why I want to have a fuller discussion when Mike's here.
Yeah, so I think I want to continue the conversation now for a couple of reasons. Again, I, we're going to be looking into the industry standard, those ratings. We're going to have, take staff time to do that work. It's going to consume valuable staff time. And I'm unclear as to, and I get that, well, you live sort of in that neighborhood, you're not right there. I don't understand if people, sure, you can walk around, but you don't live it. And if you don't live it, I don't think that I can understand, fully comprehend what somebody experiences. You know, we just finished talking about, on a Saturday afternoon, hammering, hammering, hammering. And so I, if on a Saturday afternoon someone is hearing hammering, hammering, hammering or pop, 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 I'm not- or pop, 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 I'm not sure that, that there's much of a difference because we, we're not there unless you're, you can't, you can't reasonably say, I walk around there, I walked around and I got a full understanding of what someone else is experiencing. Because I honestly, you, that's really very good. I couldn't do that.
I understand.
So, so again, if we're wasting, I don't want to waste staff time if the intent is to just put this back and not look at the, the, whether or not the mitigation is successful. Because if it's successful, then, then there's a conversation. If it's unsuccessful, or if, if it doesn't matter, then let's not waste time, energy, effort, or any more taxpayer dollars. That's, it's a, to me, it's kind of a no-brainer.
I agree. I mean, and to your point, Paul, about you walked it through the neighborhood, like, did you sit in anybody's backyard?
I actually, here, first of all, I live closer to the pickleball courts than several of the neighbors who have been here talking about it. And on several occasions, when the courts were full, I went along Glen School, and I was by their houses. And I was there listening many times. And that's why I'm bringing this before the council for further discussion. Not once, not twice, not when there was one, one court full. So that's why I'm here.
So were you, so, so we'll just take the one person who lives one foot off the line. And I always go back to the fact, you know, it's interesting, we're going to send a letter to the folks over by Orchard to tell them that we're going to change, consider changing the times, the parking times. And we sent letters to all the neighbors who were going to have, was it the Verizon small nodes antenna, the small node antenna of Verizon, a number of years back? We sent letters to all of them, that their nodes were gonna be put up on their thing to get their feedback, to make sure they understood the impact. We send letters to residents if there's going to be a change in, in anything in their neighborhood. But for some reason, and I, I consider it a, a failure, a failure, that, that we didn't do this in this instance, and it was a significant change, a significant impact to the person, to the home, the homes closest within one foot, 10 feet, 30 feet. So I just, I, but again, I ask the question, and this is, I, I'm asking a very simple question. Are we just wasting staff time and taxpayer money if the intent is to simply change the hours back to what they were before we understand the success of sound mitigation efforts? Because if that, if the intent is just to put them back regardless of the outcome, then we, we are wasting taxpayer resources because it does, then doesn't matter. It's a simple question. Is the intent to restore the hours prior to the sound mitigation effort?
And I answered this question, and that's why I said, let's...
Yeah, just answer more clearly, yes or no?
Here, because I've answered this question a couple of times.
It's, I'll take it as a yes.
And, and now, I want to...
I'm going to accept it as a yes?
Excuse me. And now that's why I want to put this on for February 2nd, because we'll have the same question again next week.
No, 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 I just, I just, indulge me just with a clear answer. Is the intent, is your intent to restore the hours before understanding the effectiveness of the sound mitigation efforts? Yes or no?
Yeah, that's not the question that I want to answer because of the way you pose it.
Well, it's a simple question.
Yeah, it's real, it's not, it's not as simple as you...
Because this wouldn't be an agenda item if, it wouldn't be an agenda, I mean, why would we discuss something? We just did this resolution in November. So if we are discussing the, putting the pickleball hours back to what they were in advance of even adopting a resolution to spend $26,000, or $75,000, or $150,000 on sound mitigation effort, the question is, it's simple, yes or no? Is your intent, Councilman, to restore the hours in advance of knowing whether or not the sound mitigation effort was successful? Because if that is your intent, I would suggest that we not waste any more time of village staff, taxpayer money, valuable taxpayer dollars, we just, we could pay for flood mitigation. So the question is simple, yes or no? Is your intent to reinstate the hours in advance of knowing the outcome of those efforts?
Regardless of how many times you ask the question, I answered it, and I want to put this on the agenda for February 2nd. But if you want to ask the question again, by all means.
You didn't answer it.
You didn't answer the question.
No, I, I actually did, so...
Yes or no?
Susan?
Yes or no?
Just put it on the agenda.
It's a yes or no question.
I'm not here to be cross-examined by you.
I'm not cross-examining, I'm asking a question.
Yeah. Heather, can we just put this on the agenda for February 2nd, please?
We can put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
We can put it on the agenda. I'm asking a question. I guess you don't want to answer the question. Heather, if you're going to put it on the agenda for next week, please put on hold any sound mitigation efforts because I do not want to waste valuable staff time and taxpayer resources if the intent is to do this in advance of those efforts.
Okay.
No, let's not hold up sound mitigation efforts. These are, we can walk and chew gum at the same time, and we can do both, and it's the, and it's only because Mike is not here tonight that we're having this extended and painful discussion.
It's not painful, it's a question, it's a simple question. It may be painful for you, it's not painful for me.
Heather, I would like to discuss all of this at the February 2nd meeting.
I would like to have the other, I would like to have Nancy not do any more work on the sound mitigation efforts. We can put the item on the agenda for next week, but my preference is to not spend any more tax dollars or staff time or resources if the intent is to go ahead and do something without knowing the effectiveness of our sound mitigation effort. Because one wouldn't be on the agenda in advance of knowing that.
I see no reason to delay inquiry into the standards and finding out what's going on with the sound mitigation sheets and, and aggravating this conflict.
Well, I think that the, the issue at hand is if you're going to take an action regardless of the outcome of the other item, then we are simply wasting valuable time and energy. Look, we have parks that need to be cleaned up, we have other things that need to be done. Why are we wasting time? This is going to be phone calls, emails, time, energy, and effort. As a taxpayer, I object. Because if we're not going to care about that outcome and simply restore the hours, then that's your, look, you could do that if you have a council majority doing it, that's, you know, I, I truly do respect the council majority. I, I know not everybody does, but I do. And if that's the outcome, that's fine. But I don't think that we should be wasting time, energy, and resources on something if it's just a sleight of hand, a dog and pony show. I'm not into that, so let's just not have her do any more work on it.
I disagree. I want to know the outcome of her work.
Heather, you've got two, two council people who have asked for this. Will you just put it on the agenda, please, so that we can move on?
Well, I, I agree with Mayor. That's, I mean, it seems like you said we're, we're, you only wanted, you wouldn't have gone, you wouldn't have asked to put it on February if Mike was here. So obviously you know that Pam, Mike, and you would change the hours back. So why don't you just change the hours back?
Right, just do it.
Because you're gonna, you're gonna do it anyway.
Why the whole show? Just do it.
Because, because we also want to make it as comfortable for the neighbors in the area as possible.
But then you wouldn't have put that on an agenda in advance of knowing the outcome of those efforts. It doesn't square, Paul, I'm sorry, it just doesn't square in the real world.
I understand.
In any event, so you have that, Heather, and we will continue on, wait, Project Pride.
Project Pride is the last item.
Okay, so Project Pride, Councilwoman Reynolds and I were able to pull up, we have here the, the original resolution, whatever year that was, Project Pride. What year is that? Oh, 1983. And it appears that that is 15, a 15-member committee. And so what we did in order to take Project Pride to restructure, to reorganize with a little bit more, I guess, structure to it, we concluded that the members, and we can add or subtract, so feel free, seven residents, one member of the Shade Tree Commission, one hoping, someone from the Women Gardeners, three business representatives hoping to find folks with either landscaping, garden, landscape architecture experience, a village staff representative preferably from parks, and a village council liaison. And as we see that typically in the past, Project Pride was just charged with planting the flowers in the central business district, late spring, early summer. And in this instance, what we would look to do is to ask Project Pride to work with village council, management, residents, and stakeholders to organize and initiate improvements to foster, foster a visually appealing environment throughout the Village of Ridgewood. And in doing so, we would continue to have responsible for organizing and implementing the CBD, spring, summer plantings, including budget prep and request, because that's something Gary always did. Seek stakeholder input to foster improvements in areas throughout the village, not necessarily isolated to only the central business district. We talk sometimes about the island on Grove, you know, other areas. A lot of times we talk about the overlook up on Crest. So there's different areas that certainly could have a little bit more attention. Quarterly maintenance and improvement recommendations to village council, my pet peeve are the, the lamppost downtown in the park that the covers are unscrewed and in the thing and all the wires are there. So it's a real pet peeve. I would see that on the list, hopefully it'll get done before then. In any event, so just comments, input, how do we see this? Do we think this is expanded? Is it too limited? Should it be more or less, whatever anyone thinks?
What, what is the current structure of Project Pride?
So I was council liaison to Project Pride for a couple of years, and then Lorraine became council liaison. And usually, we called, we call the one person, the one-man operation, and say, okay, we're going to get the flowers, we give a budget, and, and then we put on our sneakers and go downtown, and we plant, and they water, and then that's it. But I feel like Project Pride shouldn't be limited. I think that we have a lot of interest in, in helping and that we should pursue those individuals that are interested, and, and everybody brings something different to the table. We have lots of people that are very good with planting and gardening, but we also have those little things that, you know, people, some people see. And so I think it's an opportunity to just add a little more structure.
Instead of just the flower pots and the CBD, if there's other areas in town that people feel need beautifying, if we can do it, if we can get the budget for it, let's, you know, let's go for it.
I, I think, I think that's terrific. I'm just looking at, I'm looking at the 2014 Project Pride Committee, and I'm not sure, it's got about 20 people on it. And so we're cutting this back to a dozen or so.
No, 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 so actually, so, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you for raising that. So what would happen, Project Pride would also, that committee is just the people that volunteered to go out and plant. So it was everyone who volunteered to go out and plant. And honestly, I was the council liaison in 2014 to Project Pride, and I promise you, those people weren't there because I was there. And I'm not, and I'm not really a green thumb, so I apologize for anything I planted that didn't survive the weekend. However, all those people, a lot of people sign up, but Project Pride, this, this core group, committee, would be able to go out into the world and recruit volunteers. So they would be the, the base committee, but they would get volunteers that would, similar to that list.
Right.
So they could just do an outreach to the public to say, okay, this is our project for the day, and get the 100 people. People could show up, they do.
Do you get that many people?
Yeah, I, I mean, but because...
Really not that many.
But I mean, you get, do you get 30, 40, 50 people?
We had when, when the year, what year was it? It was 2014 when, when Mike and everyone went down and cleaned the ivy off the, out of the tree wells, the, all that ivy was all tangled. And I, I mean, there were a lot of volunteers that went and cleaned out the vines, cleaned out every single tree well. It was, you know, choking the trees, it was choking the flowers. Lots of people went downtown, cleaned out the tree wells, there were a lot. So yes, you can get a lot of volunteers. And I also think Project Pride would be the best committee to start to work on that adopt-a-tree plan that could be easily implemented through Project Pride, which allows somebody like me to say, okay, I want to adopt this tree well. And then I would have a little sign that says, I adopted the tree well. And then I would be responsible for, like, the planting and, and other things.
Listen, you guys have been involved in this, and if you think that this is a good structure for this, and I drive by Lorraine's house all the time, and, and I am so envious, so you will, if this was...
It's not gonna look like my house, no.
No, no, but, and, and that's not to say that, you know, you're not gonna get into this and say, oh, we want to tweak it, whatever. Yeah, this, I'm, I'm great with this.
Where are all those sunflowers? You know, you used to give out the awards?
I think they're trashed. You know, like, I asked Gary about that, and he wasn't even sure. I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if Nancy has any idea, they might be in some closet somewhere, but, you know...
Well, what we're talking about is people would be awarded a sunflower in their front yard if they had put out such a nice display that everybody passing could admire the garden. And just to beautify any neighborhood in Ridgewood. And it was very inspiring for, for a gardener.
Yeah, it was great, I loved it.
Yeah, and, and not to put it in the mission statement or anything, but, you know, it was a fun program.
No, definitely, I think we should bring that back.
It was, it was once a week in the summer months, and they awarded about four each week, and then at the end of the summer, like in September, they have them come in and get certificates.
Right.
So...
So I think the mission statement is pretty general, that it covers what we wanted to cover. I, I mean, you guys can look at it, I, I just typed it up. I think it sounds good. So what we'll do is we'll prepare, I guess, a resolution because we have to, Heather, we can, Lorraine and I can work, are you okay to work on a resolution? So we can work on a resolution to, to adopt, and then doing that, adopting that resolution on February 9th. Then that gives us the opportunity to appoint people to that committee. So I think we had a number of people that, in our last two interview sessions, we had lots of people that expressed an interest in that as an opportunity to volunteer in town, so. Good?
Yeah, definitely.
All right. Is that it? That's everything? We're good? We'll go back to public comment?
That's it.
Not, was there something else, Heather? Sorry. Okay. Public comment not to exceed five minutes per person. Name and address for the record.
Lillian Blood, 250 North Maple Avenue. I'm not here just on pickleball, but I am interested in why you don't want to hear from your constituents, from the people who elected you to be representatives of them, why you don't have a hybrid interest in having people be able to comment, not just the people who can get here, but the people who cannot get here. So that's, that's one of the things. I am sort of shaking here because I'm angry at you, Susan, and just to be able to sit up there and not want to know what your people in your community want to say. So that's one thing. Getting back, you have information... Getting back, you have information that I've given you, that, that I didn't make up, but that the county of Bergen County has on sound. The sound that is played by the pickleball people, the sound that the ball makes when it hits the paddle, does not extend beyond the sound that is acceptable. The people who wrote and came to, wrote the report, had come to the, uh, Glenn Courts and listened, and then went over to Eastbrook and, uh, and listened to the sounds over there. The people who listened to the sounds, said the sounds are acceptable, health-wise, it's the Health Service that does it, Environmental Health Service did this report, and the sound is acceptable. It is not, and it's not all day long, it's not even for hours, it's, it's two hours here, and maybe another two hours in the evening, it's not all day. And Sundays and Mondays are no difference, the sound is the same on both days. So why we can't play on Mondays, and we can play on Sundays, doesn't make any sense at all to me. And we can play on Fridays for the same reason, because the sound on Thursday is different than the sound on Friday? That doesn't make sense. The second thing is, the people who complained are a handful of people, that's actually less than a handful probably, who all live further from the field than is acceptable. And you said that you made a mistake, or you and the council made a mistake in putting the pickleball court, courts there. You didn't make a mistake, it was a wonderful thing. Pickleball is a very acceptable way of people exercising, not just elderly people, but children as well. And for you to say that, oh, I made a mistake, and I'm sorry, I made a mistake, I didn't have enough information, the information was there, and the information is still there. The information is the people who complain are complainers, and some people just like to complain, don't ask me why, their life must not be of any interest, they don't play pickleball, obviously, because then they'd be happier. So those are the things I want to say. Let me just look at my notes, because I was just, been here since 7:30. I would just hope that each one of you would feel that your, people who live in this community are valuable, and not only valuable to vote for you, but valuable to listen to, and they have feelings, and when you shut them out of being able to contribute, I think that this is very unfair, and not very community-minded. So I wish that you would do an opportunity to reconsider two things. One, the pickleball hours. If the sound barriers that are up now are sufficient according to the Bergen County study, why do we need more? I don't think we need more, but if you want to put more up, that's okay with me. The people who complain are complainers, they live too far from the courts to actually hear. When they were here the other day, a month or two months ago, and said it sounds like cannonballs, you all know, that's ridiculous, there's no way that sounds like a cannonball, no matter what your hearing is, and certainly at their ages of 70-something, their hearing is not hearing cannonballs when a pickleball hits a paddle, okay? And that's about all, but I'm just really sort of disappointed in you, that you don't want to hear from your citizens, and that's it.
Hi, Siobhan Cram Winograd, 274 Ivy Place. Um, I'm going to begin at the same place, again, as a reminder, after somewhat embarrassing exchange, you are a council of equals. According to the public, not any one of you has any more authority on agenda setting, and what just occurred should not occur. For example, if I wanted to come up here and say, I think you should state a proclamation that Seamus Winograd is the most handsome dog in Ridgewood, New Jersey, ridiculous as it may seem, and as true as I know it to be, if one of you chose to carry that forward for discussion, it should go on. What's happening here is a silencing, silencing of the community by pulling the plug on hybrid, and a silencing of each other. I mean, who really cares what Paul thinks about that? He's just one vote. And what causes us concern, you know, the public, is that it appears that there's side part conversations that we can't see. As much conversation as you can have in public, the better transparency is. Everyone would agree on that. So if you want to put it on the agenda, you want to put it on the agenda, have at it. Stop getting in each other's way of the agenda, which is what happened this week. With respect to the hybrid, um, I'm an advocate, as you all know, I am the daughter of the disabled community. My father had polio, he was wheelchair-bound, my children have made videos regarding access, this is not something that I made up to come here and discuss, it, for me, it is personal, it is lifelong, and I'm dismayed with the response to the disabled community, and this is how advocacy works. I don't like something my local government is doing, and I came to you first, and the only person in June who had the decency to write me back was Pam. Nobody else. Nobody addressed the merits of my issue, I was ignored. So as an advocate, I amplified my message within the community, and that community's not 10 people. The League of Women Voters is a large organization, it's over 100 people, Access Ridgewood is a large organization. It would be completely irresponsible for me during COVID to rally a crowd. I could, but I won't. So I came here to advocate, and I used things, and other people joined me, and that's the way it works. To say that it's 10 people is so disingenuous, it's just unbelievable to me. My family is more than 10 people. My life here in Ridgewood is larger than 10 people, and you have shut the doors on people, and they can't come in here to express this. There's also things that you've just welcomed a whole bunch of disabled people into the community, who, like, I would like to remind you, are more than a COA checkbox. Ridgecrest, these are not people that you get to use for certain things, that the government says, okay, it fits in this category, and then say, we don't want you to participate in our government. It's a terrible, terrible message to the aged and the disabled, and other people as well that have been mentioned. You know, me personally, I totally get you want to vote no. What I can't get is why not memorialize it? I don't even understand what's so wrong, if you feel so strongly about not having it, put it to a vote, be proud of your no, and then let the public have the record of how you actually voted. What's so bad about that? You have a disagreement. What's really bad is what happens with this, is that when it doesn't go to a vote, there becomes a distortion ever in later months. Oh, I didn't say no, but I did say no. So if you want to vote no, have at it. Have at it and live with the people who don't think that's a good decision, like me. I view it as anti-access, there's no way around it, you're, nothing you're going to say, yes or no. For me, it's that simple, it's that personal. If you want to vote no, and say to these phantom citizens, go for it. What I can't understand is why you're resisting getting it on and voting for it. Be proud of your decision that we so disagree with, stand by it, make it a matter of the record. This is just so completely crazy to me. When I tell people what I'm advocating for, for everyday people to participate in their local government, it's, it's just totally obscene. The other part that I'd like to discuss is, every year, we talk about best practices and how you work so well with the Board of Ed. Well, why are Board of Ed and parents of school-aged children afforded the opportunity to communicate via hybrid, and you guys aren't? When you sit in this meeting with them, and, you know, in years past, you vilify them for taking a large portion, and you say, oh, any, any ability we could to share with the Board of Ed, share this, they've been running it the whole time. And again, that looks extremely ageist to say to only people who have school-aged children, you get this, and older people don't. We need to take real, live action to support very important people. You know, all people are important, but you want to retain your elderly population, and you want to support your handicapped community. So I encourage you-
Thank you.
-to put this on the agenda. If you want to vote no, have at it.
Thank you.
Hello again, Anne Burton Walsh, 112 South Irving, I'm now speaking for myself. Um, I want to acknowledge that I recall the discussion on September 22nd regarding hybrid access, um, but I'm not aware of a vote, an actual vote on hybrid access, or of a discussion by the fully seated board, including the new council person. So if, if that's happened, and you wouldn't mind providing the dates of the vote and the, you know, discussion by the fully seated council, that would be really appreciated. Um, and I also just want to say that the situation here just seems untenable. You have, in terms of what's changed since the last discussion, um, because I'm pretty sure that, that the new councilman's coming on has changed since, since the last discussion, the new council person has now imposed a personal health directive on this meeting, so what we have behind me is just a sprinkling of chairs in a huge space, I mean, nothing else looks like this. Not school, not church, not restaurants, um, but because there isn't hybrid access, the new council person cannot beam himself into the meeting, so he has to be here in person, and so we have this situation, um, which again, I, I just don't think is tenable. So hybrid access certainly makes a lot of sense for the remainder of COVID, um, and I fully agree with all of the residents who have come forward to say that it should be independent of COVID, that it makes a lot of sense in order to include the disabled and other people with logistical challenges, and I'm looking at the people who have come forward, and it's Linda McNamara, Annan Boyd Loving, Siobhan Winograd, Lillian Blood, longtime contributors to the public discourse, as well as Age Friendly Ridgewood, Access Ridgewood, the other organization that I was speaking on behalf of earlier tonight, that is hundreds of people, and rather than wait those people, it seems to me that you're instead giving more credence to this couple of unidentified people who have, who have stated their objection to hybrid access, I don't know what their objection is, and I do think that, that accountability requires that you explain what their objections are, and justify the decision, and I would just ask again, um, for a vote on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Okay. Um, all right, with that, we'll end public comment and, uh, take a resolution to go into closed session.
So moved.
I have to read it first.
No, not yet. "Be it resolved by the village council of the Village of Ridgewood that the village council meet in closed session on January 26, 2022, at 7:30 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter on the agenda can be reached, and that said closed session be held in the Sidney V. Stoltz courtroom of Ridgewood Village Hall, 131 North Maple Avenue, Ridgewood, New Jersey, and be it further resolved that the matters to be discussed in closed session are limited to personnel matters to include police department. These matters are allowable under NJSA 10:4-12 at SEC, and be it further resolved that the minutes of this meeting shall be made available to the general public when such matters have been deemed completed by resolution of the village council."
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Anyone second?
Second.
Thank you.
No, I'm gonna keep you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Oh, I don't need this.
How do we have a closed here? Do we close in?
Yeah, yeah, we can do closed in here. Heather, we can do closed in here, so just mic's off. Don't throw anything at me, Paul.